Are we live? Okay, it's nine thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. I'll look for my clerk for roll call.
Thank you, your worship. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the October twenty eighth, can we have the whole meeting? I'm Jennifer Connor, Clerk of Ramara Township. I'll begin with roll call of council. Mayor Clark.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Bell.
Present.
Councillor Snutch.
Present.
Councillor Fisher. Councillor Fisher is absent. Uh, councillor to you.
Present.
Councillor Gough.
Present.
Councillor Bell.
Present.
Thank you, your worship.
Yes, councillor Fisher is not well this morning, so we wish her the very best. Uh, do I have a disclosure of peculiar interest, any member of council? I will have one if staff salaries come up again. Oh, let's be, go ahead. Somebody want to read it?
This meeting is being streamed live on the Township of Ramara YouTube channel. Be advised that by attending a public meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Township of Ramara, you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being recorded, and they will form part of the recording. The Chair, CAO, and/or Clerk have the discretion and authority to terminate or interrupt the live streaming in exceptional circumstances where the content of debate is considered inappropriate to be published. Attendees are advised that they may be subject to legal action if their actions result in inappropriate behavior and/or comments.
Okay, uh, with that, I'll look for a disclosure of peculiar interest. And again, only if the salary of staff comes back, then I'll declare at that time as I have a family member that works for the township. So deputations and presentations we have done, so administration and finance, turn the meeting back over to you, uh, Mr. Snutch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have two items today. The first item is four point one, and we will uh, review a few odds and ends from the budget that we, uh, talked about. When was that? Thursday, okay. Uh, and then we will move on and do the water and wastewater budget in item four point two. So to get going here, item four point one, Mano, I believe you have a summary of some of the issues that we still had to look into, and, uh, you've got a little presentation here for us, so go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Um, so after Thursday's meeting, uh, there was a few budget amendments that were approved, uh, by council. And so we went back and applied those changes, and this is the new summary. As you can see, if we scroll down a little bit, um, and we'll go through each of the changes that were approved. Scroll down a little bit again, please. Um, so we're now sitting at a municipal tax rate increase of five point one five in an estimated tax increase, a combined tax rate increase of four oh seven. Um, so we'll go through the changes. If you can go to the next page. So these are the changes, the top portion are the changes that were discussed during council meeting on the twenty fourth, except for the last one. It was discussed, but we didn't have an amount. Um, so, uh, we went back and estimated possible revenues from, uh, the agreement with N R K uh, for forty thousand, and we will readjust next year when we know the actual revenues that are coming in. The goal was to have something in a budget, but not, um, since we don't know how much we'll get, how much, uh, revenue this will generate, we, we wanted to go with the, um, an estimate that wouldn't affect the budget if it doesn't happen. So these are all the changes that were discussed, and the impact on the budget overall is two hundred and eighty-four thousand, almost two hundred and eighty-five. And then, um, I also adjusted our contracted services in and men, so we're now sitting at five point one five. When we left the last meeting, there was items that still needed to be discussed. So, um, those items are listing, are listed below. Uh, and so we have the Lagoon City Parks and Waterways budget to discuss. However, I just want to make it clear that there is no impact on the tax rate increase uh, because it's fully funded by, um, their special levy. And then we, uh, wanted to revisit the, uh, rooted in Ramara. Uh, council requested more information about the accessibility reserve transfer if it's needed, and, uh, we'll see, um, there's something on it right after this. And there's also an item that was on one of the slide, and we didn't discuss it, so that's why I brought it back, so that it's not forgotten. Um, okay, so we'll go through, um, the accessibility reserve. So the reserve at the end of, um, twenty twenty-three, opening of twenty twenty-four sits at eleven, a hundred and eleven, eight hundred and fifteen. Um, can you make it a little bigger, please? So we are doing some projects in twenty twenty-four, and we estimate, um, the cost of it at fifth, I can't see. Look on my. Yes, perfect. So, um, the accessibility project that we're doing right now, we estimate the cost at fifty-nine thousand, six twenty-five, which would put the reserve at fifty-two thousand, one ninety-one at the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, the projects we are planning on doing on in twenty twenty-five are at eighty-nine thousand. So that, this would put us in a shortfall of thirty-six thousand, eight oh nine if we don't do the reserve transfer. So if I add back the reserve transfer that is currently in the twenty twenty-five budget, at the end of twenty twenty-five, we should be at around almost forty thousand in that reserve. And future, um, if you scroll down a little bit. So this is the, um, top portion is just like in a nutshell what the accessibility reserve should look like. And then we have, uh, more, um, details on the, uh, twenty twenty-four projects and the twenty twenty-five projects. We currently have a, uh, grant that is set aside that we will be using to complete the projects in twenty twenty-four, but the amount that we're pulling out of reserve is our contribution to that grant. And twenty twenty-five, if you scroll down a little bit. Oh, too much. There it is. So these are the projects that we're planning on doing in twenty twenty-five. We did apply for a grant, but at this time, we don't know if we'll get it, so we need to be able to fund, um, all the projects. The only one that absolutely needs to get done in twenty twenty-five, even if we don't get the grant, is the last one at thirty thousand for, uh, the doors at the medical center and the town, uh, here. And, um, if you scroll down a little bit, these are the future projects, uh, that we, we need to, uh, do in the following years. Uh, we don't have prices yet, but it's just a list of future projects that are needed. So at this point, I feel, um, very confident that the reserve transfer of seventy-six thousand, six hundred is, is required in order to do all of this. So that's it for my summary of the changes from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mano. Any questions from council? Uh, councillor Bell.
Thank you. I have, um, some procedural questions, actually, before we get rolling, so we didn't adopt the agenda at the outset. That's not on the agenda for some reason, and we have a closed session that's not identified to the public, so that's one issue. The second issue is this presentation, this on-the-desk presentation. I received requests over the weekend from people who wanted to know what on-the-desk means, um, and they would like to see this document. They won't have been able to see it on screen. I couldn't, and I'm in the room. Um, so we need to, like, that needed to be added to the agenda at some time after Thursday's meeting and, uh, before this morning's. So those are the two procedural things specific, um, to the agenda, and then, uh, the use of the term L C C, people are confused by that as well, because they don't know if we mean L C C A, which is private, or if we mean L C C, which is Longford Community Center, so, um, just moving forward, it would be, it would make sense to, to properly name that particular line item so that it doesn't create any confusion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, since that doesn't have anything to do with what we're.
Yeah. I guess this will be added to the agenda. We just received it. On desk means that there's a document prepared and handed out to us in the morning, which is the highlights of what we passed the other day. So that will be up here as an addition to the agenda, I would assume.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, that is what I said on Thursday.
Yeah.
That there would not be time to have something, uh, formally presented, uh, and uploaded. I indicated it would be on desk on Thursday, a- and I did explain what on desk meant. Perhaps individuals that never heard the recording will have the opportunity to now understand on disk. Men's, uh, staff worked on Friday and were able to finish something for this morning to be able to guide you through. And yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, the information will be uploaded and become part of the record.
Thank you. Okay, does any other councillors, do any other councillors have any questions on Mano's summary? Okay, I have a, I have a few. I just want to get clarification, so there's no misunderstanding. I've asked a couple of people, we're still trying to get, I have to watch the tapes, I guess, again. The doctor recruitment program, did we decide that that was out and staff will come back to us through the year on other ways that we can recruit, uh, doctors for the area? Or is it in the budget or out of the budget right now?
So it's in the budget, but, so the twenty thousand contribution is still in the budget. What we did is we removed who's, who would, would get the twenty thousand, because that's what staff will investigate in twenty twenty-five, whether is.
So it's still in the budget.
It's still in the budget, but not necessarily for a really a recruitment, uh, really a, like, sorry, I don't.
Okay, so we're putting money aside to develop something in the future that will help us meet our end goal of getting doctor services or whatever. Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Gough?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna comment on that, uh, councillor Snutch was that, uh, the motion was for it to go into reserves, so that way we could maybe reach out to the Kuching Health Network.
Okay, so it's in reserves. On the recreation program, you've reduced. Sorry, on the recreation program.
Hello?
I did, but I'm talking. On the recreation. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So it seems that there's a misunderstanding, and I think we need to point that out before we move past physician recruitment. Um, councillor Gough just said it again. Um, there's this conversation around reaching out to Kuching, so I don't think that anybody has read the website or has understood actually what the physician recruitment program is. It is Kuching, just to be clear. So, uh, last meeting, when I was interrupted numerous times and I wasn't able to finish presenting data, because I don't bring opinion, I bring data and research, and, um, i- if I had been able and permitted to speak like everybody else does, you would have heard me explain at that point. So just for clarity, I think it might be a good idea for council to go and read what the physician recruitment program is and visit the website, because you seem not to understand as a body that it is Kuching. So I just want to make that crystal clear.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, perhaps I, um, misunderstood the direction from council, uh, one, to keep an allocation in the budget, uh, to change the notation regarding where it was going. And I thought the direction, uh, was for the C A O in conjunction with the mayor to reach out to the Kuching and to report back. That's my recollection. I, I see councillor Gough nodding his head. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on my recollection.
And if I, if I may add, it wasn't just that to any private health team that would be interested in expanding, uh. So it, I mean, we can name that one by name, but it was any private health team that we might think would be interested in working with us.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on here to the recreation budget, some notes here. You've reduced the amount of the brochures by fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and, and basically that's just to get the, you haven't figured out exactly how you're gonna do yet, but that's what you're proposing. It goes down by fifteen compared to what it was twenty-two, I believe?
Um, we have come up with the plan to have printed copies, um, but a significant less amount, and we're not sending them out, so we would be doing, um, a tax insert of some sort that would say we have guides printed at these specific locations, and you can pick them up there.
Okay, great. Um, councillor Bell.
So the folks who can't get to picking them up because we don't have transportation, we're negating the potential that they can call in and ask you to send them a copy? Because I thought that we were clear that we would have, um, some component allocated that if, if an individual cannot come to a facility or the township office, it can be mailed to that individual. So I, I just don't want to remove that option from the public.
Um, I don't believe we planned on mailing any out, but we could look into that as well.
Well, I think what we have is we have a budget of fifteen thousand dollars distributed, and you do the best you can to get it out there. Do you have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Nope, that was what I was gonna say. It's fifteen thousand dollar budget, go as far as it can.
Okay, um, and then I see the old, sorry?
So the budget is not fifteen. It was reduced by fifteen. Yeah, so it was twenty-two thousand, reduced by fifteen, so we still have a little bit of room to be able to, so, um, what we were planning on doing is doing some kind of a summary of all the activities, and that would be mailed out with either the tax bill or the water bill or any other township, um, communication that we already mail out, so there's no extra cost on that side. And then we would have, uh, printed copy of the full program available for pickup or on request could be mailed.
Okay, thank you. On the economic development, when you say you've removed the ten thousand, I assume that was the windows? Okay, thank you. And then the economic, um, uh, study that we're doing, it did get approved, did it? So. Okay, good. All right, and, um, there was also um, in admin, in this, I guess it's the same thing with the, um, with the pay equity study, you're just cutting back on it a bit. Um, and the other thing that was in here, what was decided with the food recycling program? The, the composter, the five thousand. I know we had a discussion, but I just don't remember if that was voted on or in or out, or whether we want to.
That's, that's stayed in.
That's, it's in the budget as of right now?
In the budget.
Uh, Mr. Clerk.
I would once again remove it, be removed. I've had time to read all the documentations involving it, and no, I think, uh, I, I had forgotten, and I'll admit that we're doing an experimental organics program with condominiums at, at county, and I think we should see how that plays out first, because if it rolls out that we can actually provide the service, I think it's a better way to go. So at this time, I would move to remove it.
So is that, is that a motion? Do you want me to second that? You're seconded? Um, all in favor? That'll be removed. Okay, um, so I guess this is the last chance. Uh, councillor Bell.
Thank you. Uh, so the food cycler, I'm gonna just put it on the floor right now that that's gonna be an amendment on, uh, at council, because I will be, uh, looking for a recorded vote on that. I also have commentary on this page before we move off, so whenever you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, at this point, what I'm gonna do is take questions, any questions on the budget except for Lagoon City Parks and Waterway, which we're gonna move into immediately after we're finished this.
Thank you. So on the, uh, pay equity, I am objecting to making any modification to the pay equity that was proposed in the twenty twenty-five budget. I think that, uh, to argue, um, and, and, and remove a one point seven percent increase that's been.
I will step out of the room. I do have a.
That's right, thank you. Yeah. Sorry, go ahead. I will, I'll.
Does this include firefighters?
No.
Good.
I'm just gonna let Mayor Clerk exit. Thank you. So what was proposed was three percent for the, uh, consultation and studies and three point seven percent increase. Um, what I, I hadn't been permitted to speak again on Thursday, and what, and I, I object, so, um, I, I, I think to remove the, the fair compensation that our, that our staff has been waiting for for four years is irresponsible and short-sighted and just frankly quite unfair. Um, these staff members work hard.
I'm sorry, councillor Bell, just remember, I'm interrupting you, I'm chairing, okay? I am chairing.
Point of order, you do not interrupt. I have five minutes, actually.
No, I am chairing, and I'm gonna remind you of the rules.
Procedure by law.
The rules are, we're supposed to be asking questions here, not making statements.
I will make whatever statement I like.
You've called a point of order, so it's against the chairman. I think it's up to our clerk to make a decision on this. The chairman has interrupted you.
As per usual.
Uh, Madam Clerk, the, uh, the question, uh, before you was, um, a point of order raised by councillor Bell. The Chair, uh, did not recognize that and moved forward. Um, so, uh, the deputy has asked for a procedural, uh, comment from the clerk.
Please proceed, councillor Bell. Thank you, and if you like, I'll phrase it as a question. Uh, so there are members of council who recently give them, gave themselves a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase, and I guess I'm questioning how those same members of council then could negate a one point seven percent increase among staff members who deserve to be compensated for the work they do. So, um, I, I am not in support of modifying that recommendation at all, and if this council intends to proceed, then we can pull that now as an amendment, because I'll be looking for a recorded vote, uh, to not pay our staff, foolish, short-sighted. We're opening the door and asking them to leave, and we need to keep them. They are knowledge, knowledgeable and experienced, and if they walk out the door, they're taking their knowledge and experience with them. It will hurt the township, and it will hurt our residents.
Councillor Gough.
Um, forgive me if I'm mistaken, but that ten thousand dollars wasn't that doing for the study? And you were gonna pick up more?
Um, Mr. Chairman, could I provide clarity both on councillor Bell's, uh, question, the statement, and the follow-up question, uh, from councillor Gough? To be clear, uh, Mr. Chairman, there were two items that were addressed on Thursday. The first, with respect to an allocation to deal with a pay equity analysis, uh, where ten thousand dollars, uh, was removed, uh, step number one. I will.
It went from thirty to twenty, am I correct?
Correct, correct, Mr. Chairman. I will come back and summarize, but that was point number one. Point number two, um, as council was in deliberations in consultation with the manager of human resources, it was staff, uh, i.e. the C A O that recommended, uh, a reduction in the general cost of living from three point seven percent to two. And the basis of that, Mr. Chairman, was primarily to align the non-union, the excluded staff member, uh, contributions from a cost of living perspective, to make that consistent with the bargaining unit staff that will receive a two percent cost of living adjustment in twenty twenty-five. So in summary, Mr. Mayor, there were two items of deliberation, uh, one, reducing the allocation to deal with pay equity by ten thousand dollars, still leaving Ms. Wilson the, um, uh, the opportunity to be able to manage that project. And two, um, a reduction in the cost of living, uh, allocation from three point seven to two to align with, uh, bargaining unit, uh, staff members.
Which is one of the major reasons that this budget has come into line. Correct? That was the largest adjustment we made, wasn't it?
Um.
Oh, other than the O P P, I guess that was a little bit.
Correct. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, councillor Gough, anything else? Okay, does anybody, uh, I guess we can get the, uh, if that's in the discussion, we'll get the mayor back in here. We've. All right, so if there's no other questions on the budget as it is now, we will move on to the Lagoon City Parks and Waterways. And, uh, Mano, maybe you can give us a little recap on the, uh, on the budget.
So we'll have the, um, the presentation from last Thursday back up the screen in a short moment. Um, but I can just start with an overview. Um, so on the revenue section, uh, there's one, one million, hundred and thirty-four thousand of revenues from Lagoon City people, um, Lagoon City residents, uh, which is a special levy added to the tax bill to pay for the expenses of the Lagoon City Parks and Waterways Commission. So that's their main revenue, and then we have another line at fifteen thousand, five hundred, which is, um, other revenues, uh, that happened during the year, such as, um, their wristband and the beach and other smaller revenues. So that is their, um, revenue. There is no taxation that is going towards, um, the Lagoon City Parks and Waterways. Um, on on the expense size, uh, side, um, if I go through my. Some of the capital projects in the budget highlights was a hundred thousand dollar for, uh, bubbler expansion, and then sixty-five thousand for gondola, Lagoon noise to investigate and come up with a solution. Uh, it's slide forty-eight. And then there was half of the cost of a piece of equipment that we already discussed when we were going through the infrastructure budget. And so the Lagoon City Parks and Waterways budget was pre-approved by the commission before, um, we went through and had to do some cuts on the township side. And this piece of equipment was not, uh, did not make it to the, the draft presented to council. So that's it for the highlights. Is there any question on that?
Uh, we're stuck. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, I thought we took out the ninety-two thousand for that half cost of the eight ton.
We did in the township side. This is the Lagoon City Parks and Waterways?
I thought we had talked about that as well last week, and we had removed it from that side as well. Well, it is up to us. We can, we can take that out of the budget. It's up to us to make a decision.
Uh, councillor Bell.
The half that was on the Lagoon City side, I'm gonna repeat what I said Thursday, just because different people might be listening. The Parks and Waterways Commission did not request for this budget item. Uh, infrastructure was working with us to try to find solutions, because the cost of, uh, rental is quite high each summer for the harvesting operation, so, uh, infrastructure had thought that if there was a way to, to share on a piece of equipment, we would purchase it. The Parks and Waterways Commission intent is, uh, still to discuss, because what we may do is look for a used piece of equipment that was still open for discussion. So we wouldn't be removing the nine to five today, but we don't know what that amount would look like. If we're gonna be looking for a used piece of equipment, it could be substantially less, and we may decide to just not even pursue, um, but we know that it's, I can't remember, four thousand a month, I think, about in, in rental, so, uh, for four months, so it's a substantial annual cost. Um, and the other thing I want to say, just as a commentary, there is no bubbler system. And, um, so one of the things that we've been doing through Parks and Waterways since about twenty twenty or twenty-one is making sure that we standardize language so that we don't confuse residents. The system is called Clean Flow. So I'm asking that any of our documentation be updated so that it correctly reflects what the system is and does.
Are there any other questions? Uh, I have a question for Josh. Um, Josh, at one point, we discovered, and this was confirmed through Zach, that the light on the end of the pier is actually hooked up to the wastewater and wastewater meter. Has that been fixed now, even though it's so minor? But has it been fixed so it's properly allocated?
No, it hasn't yet. It still is fed power through, uh, the water plant, Lagoon City.
Do we have any intentions of fixing or even doing a manual adjustment on it, so it gets charged to the right people?
For the amount of power, it's an LED light that's on the end of the tower, so the amount of power that's actually drawn through it would be minimal. Uh, we haven't investigated to put it in secondary meter just for that, uh, or look at what the consumption is for that LED light.
Does anyone on council have any, in? You're, you're fine leaving it where it is? Okay, just so we know that that's, okay, um, we'll move on to the next. Can you give me specifics a little bit more on the fifteen-five and the other revenue that's coming in? You said wristbands. Are they charging for the, the, the wristbands after they produce them and suns in revenue and the others? And then it's an expense and it becomes a revenue, or what do we, why wristbands? And then it's an expense and it becomes a revenue? Or what do we, why wristbands?
Well, so the purchase of the wristbands are in this budget. So the revenues are as well. So it's.
Okay, so that's just you pay for them down below and you get the money back.
Exactly. And there's also interest on the reserve that we enter at year end. So that's why the actuals are are very low. So the bulk of it is interest on the reserve.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bell.
For clarity, the wristbands are not purchased. The wristbands are only purchased in the event that the homeowner needs replacement. So the wristbands don't come out of charge initially out of the gate. They're charged when they're lost or whatever happens destroyed and then.
Councillor, but what do you think that revenue would be approximately? Is it anywhere near fifteen thousand or is it a couple hundred dollars?
It would be very small. It's very rare.
I'll go back to my original question. Do we know what else is in that fifteen five?
There's the bird scare tape as well. So it's very minimum revenue. As you can see, we're at two hundred and and we're in October. So the bulk of it is the interest on the reserve.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right. So I guess what we do at this point, we don't, we just move on. We've agreed to it and it'll be form of the, there's no another minute. So LCB, LCPW passed and not even as amended because there is nothing that they're amending to it unless you want to keep talk about that that truck again, or not the truck, sorry, the the excavator.
No, that's fine. If we want to leave it. I'm just trying to save money for the ratepayers. So I'll go back to the next meeting. We'll discuss it. Chair, my.
Thank you. Okay, no other comments. We'll move on to four point two and Mano, maybe you can take us through. Oh, councillor Bell.
We haven't finished this yet, so we still have Ridden Romero, the characterization study and those items. So we've skipped out of those. So the first one is rooted in Romero, which is not in the budget. There was discussion on Thursday because there seemed to be some confusion about whether there was a cement pad or not or whatever. And we were waiting for that information to make that decision today.
All right. So you go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. Yeah, this is for storing the garden tools and whatnot. Is there room right now? And I call it the old baseball building down by the diamond. Like, because I don't think there's any organized teams there. Is any room in that building or is it full? The little, the little building, because it is secure. It has a lock.
Yeah, actually, that's a great idea. It is secure and it has a code. I think the problem was is that the committee couldn't get into the shed that's closest to the garden because the key is inside the Mara Center. And the Mara Center has a key, but the baseball diamond one just has a code. Yeah.
Is there enough storage in there to store the stuff?
Yes, there is, yeah.
Then why don't we use it? Then I would suggest at this point.
Councillor Gough. My concern would be, Mr. Mayor, is that if the gardens are at right at the Romero Center, it's easier for the volunteers to actually just go to a shed right there, hook up to the water instead of having from where the baseball shed is. The travel time, we have a lot of older residents that are volunteering on this committee, just for ease of access. I think a shed would be appropriate at this time. So silly question, but why can't we get an extra key for the staff or for the people, the volunteers for the building that's closest to the garden?
Um, we could. It's just got all of the recreation and the library storage. So it's a lot more than just the, they would have access to a lot more than just the the tools.
Councillor Bell.
I just want to point out too that part of the reason that councillor Fisher had been asking for this, she was concerned about compost. And one of the reasons that the food cycle was a great idea is that it was going to be able to be used at the library, for example. So you wouldn't be worrying about compost at that point because you'd be able to do your own reduction of food waste on a daily basis even because it costs, I was, I think it was six or eight cents or something to run. So I just wanted to point that out. So I I'm not, I'm not in support of putting this in the budget. I'm very in support of the rooted in Romero program. But but not this, not a shed and 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 to solve the problem of composting, I think we we had a solution and we chose not to to go with it. So I'm not, I'm not in support of putting this in the budget.
I'm sort of fifty fifty, but I could probably go along with that. I don't think it's absolutely needed. Deputy Mayor.
Depending on what all they have there for tools. I mean, we have baseball steel lockers that we put at the diamonds and just chain them to the fence. If it's just a couple of rakes and shovels, they could do that. It's a lot cheaper. And maybe they could look at an alternative to a shed. We look at the composter and then the shed, cut it maybe down to twenty five hundred dollars. That would be my thought.
Councillor Gough. I understand that, but I know with the hoses and that, I know we were talking about it on Thursday and after the meeting with our director of infrastructure, that maybe we didn't need to have a concrete pad. It could be on gravel and because they have a base with them. So I'm okay with a spending for a polycarbonate shed for grant and putting it in the budget to really get this program up and rolling. It was a great success last year on very limited budget. And I know councillor Fisher had spent money out of her own pocket to help just move this along. So I'm okay with the four thousand dollars enough. Would anyone like to make a motion to remove the fifty eight hundred?
Sorry, it's not in the budget. So it would be a motion to put it in, wouldn't it? Because it says currently, oh, sorry, it's in. I'm sorry, I misread. Oh, I'll make a motion to remove it.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Uh, that, oh, sorry.
I will second it this time. I think it's in the fledging. It's not that I don't want to support the volunteers, but I think we have room at the other building. I'd like to get through a year, use that storage. It's unfortunate. Theft. I mean, we do have to lock everything up at night, which is really unfortunate. But if we have enough building space that we can try and make it work, I'd like to do that for another year.
Oh, Deputy Mayor.
We're not using the shed at the ball diamond. Can we not just relocate that one to the area with the gardens?
Um, we do use it for some baseball equipment with our T-ball program. Okay. Um, so I don't know if we could remove it, but.
Yeah, but I'm fine.
Okay, so the motion was put on the floor by councillor Bell. It was seconded by the mayor. All in favor of removing it from the budget. Doesn't pass, three, three. Oh, I'm sorry, Dana, I didn't see your hand. So that motion passes. The fifteen hundred dollars will come out of the budget. We're still be open to any ideas that come along later on.
I just want to be clear. What are we removing? The entire amount or the amount for the shed?
The the amount for the fifty eight hundred for the shed, I believe.
The shed was four thousand. So the balance is whatever they need to run the program.
All right. Okay, next councillor Bell, what did you say we skipped over?
The reserve transfer is in the budget. So I, are we agreeing that we're leaving it in the budget? I I think that was the that was the goal of Mano's presentation was to make sure we understood. So I'm in support of leaving it in, but I just want to, we we need to talk about it because it's there.
Does anybody want to talk about the item? Okay, well, it's in the budget. It stays in the budget and and we'll just move on. LSRC characterization study, not in budget. It's and is anyone make a motion or discussion to put it in the budget? Go ahead, councillor Bell.
So, and I did touch on this on Thursday as well a couple of times now, but just because there's new listeners, we'll just, I'll revisit it. So in two thousand and fifteen, there was a multi ministry Kuchichin Conservancy, LSRCA, Parks and Waterways Township. And I think it was county was Minister of Natural Resources, Minister of Environment and OMAFRA. So there was a project done. The Romero Creek sub watershed plan. There are other sub watershed plans which have been completed across the province. These plans are starting to be revisited. LSRCA, sorry, I am using acronyms and I don't like that. Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority has updated their website to start to move these projects forward. Part of the the where this study came from was initially we would, we were asking questions about the state of the waterways, which are indeed attributable to Lake Simcoe. And as it rolled out, I came across the the sub watershed study, not not, it's not posted at Romero's website and neither is the implementation plan, which contains eighty five recommendations for immediate implementation, which immediate at that time meant two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty. So we've reached the point now in two thousand and twenty four where those implementations have not occurred. They included a number of items such as phosphorus reduction plan and and funds to be created so that we could start to own our stewardship for Lake Simcoe because again, we're one of twenty member municipalities who have a responsibility to take care of the lake. So when the characterization study came back, and again, this was opened up in the fall of last year. Former CIO had initiated the conversation with LSRCA to start moving this forward. It was dropped over the course of the year. It didn't come back to Parks and Waterways until about three, whatever, four weeks ago, which didn't really allow us any time to then forward it properly so that it could be taken care of by the township as it should be. So all we could do at that point was send it forward to budget. So when when LSRCA came in to do their presentation, we did ask the question, would it still be a full fifty five thousand now that we're aware of the sub watershed plan? Because would we need fifty five thousand in total? Or here it says fifty three nine, but I think it was fifty five, doesn't matter. The question had been, would it take the whole amount to update that two thousand and fifteen plan? Or is there, you know, could there be a reduction in that? We won't know that now until we have the conversation open and we start working with LSRCA to move the project forward. And again, as I mentioned on Thursday, the the quality of the water in in the canals this year, which was of course exiting to Lake Simcoe, as well as near the water taking for the drinking water facility. It was, there's not even anything in the room. That's the deepest, darkest foul brown color that it was. And and the odor was atrocious. So whatever is entering into the lagoons is leaving and going into Lake Simcoe. And as I said Thursday, there's a responsibility on the part of all of the township of Romero to be protecting Lake Simcoe. It is not up to the people of Lagoon City and it has languished for some sixty years in the hands of Lagoon City, which it it's time for the the township to 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 own its stewardship of Lake Simcoe. So that's what it's about. It would be looking at what's coming in, where is it coming from, what what kind of nutrient loading is it? And 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 as this sort of secondary component, there is the Brecken Lagoon City Comprehensive Stormwater Management Plan, which also has a number of implementations which have yet to occur. So we have no stormwater management and all of that is is going directly into the lake. And I will say again, that's the Lake Simcoe Protection Act and Plan feed up to the Ontario Great Lakes Plan, which feeds up to the international Great Lakes Management Plan. And and that's because the the Great Lakes represent about twenty percent of the world's fresh water. So we have a responsibility to take care of the lake and that's what this characterization study is for. It's to get us back in line with that two thousand and fifteen study that was done by all those multiple bodies. So my motion is to put it in.
So this would add fifty three thousand, nine hundred to the budget. If you want to put, does anybody else have any discussion on this matter? I know, but sorry, I was saying before we get, oh, do we have a second? I guess not. Okay. So that stays out of the budget. All right. Now, is there anything else councillor Bell or, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm just, if we're wrapping up, I'm just curious where we ended up on the OPP stabilization reserve. We are catching that up this year to cover the twenty three percent increase.
Yeah, the entire amount that was set aside is being used this year because this is a very out of the ordinary type of increase.
Yeah, fully support that. Twenty three percent is extreme.
Councillor Gough. Some articles that I've read, next year is supposed to be a fairly substantial increase again with the OPP because it's the second phase. I think the next two years after that, the increase is is less because they don't have much of a pay equity.
So there's very little information. Unfortunately, the meeting that was supposed to happen Friday was canceled. So we were not able to answer question. We don't have a date right now. I I assume it's going to be rescheduled. However, I reach out to somebody at OPP in high ranks and he was nice enough to send me a link that explains a little bit. So from the look of it, and again, I can't confirm because we didn't have that meeting. But the bulk of the increase is for two thousand and twenty five because there was a retro for two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty five salary. So when they produce the two thousand and twenty six budget, the increase due to the salary will only be for one year, not three years.
Thank you, Mano. All right. Anything else on the budget? Then we're going to move on to item four point two. Councillor Bell.
Thank you. And I did raise this the other day with councillor Tu you. So councillor Snatch, you've sent a message about the revenue from ESS NRK and 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 again, I I think it's inappropriate to lobby council through email. If you wanted to talk about it, the place to do that is here in the public domain. And I'm not sure what you wanted to talk about. So at the beginning, Mano spoke to us about some of that revenue and I guess you've sent this email and I don't, I I don't know why you sent it and I I don't know what you want us to do.
I'll tell you why I sent it is because when I got home that night, I realized that there was an item that was discussed that we're supposed to come back to that we never did. Because when I talked to Josh about it originally, I thought it was in the infrastructure budget. So then, oh, no, sorry, I thought it was in the administration. And then Josh reminded me that it should be in the infrastructure. So I wrote a note to bring it up in infrastructure and I forgot. So my note specifically says, we forgot to rediscuss the, which you got a copy of. So I I don't understand what the concern is. I'm just letting everybody know that we forgot to go back and circle around to discuss that motion or discuss that situation again. Does that satisfy you?
Your conversation here is, you're using things like the words reasonable review and revenue and so on. So if you're sending.
Wouldn't you always use a reasonable revenue?
Be discussing here around this horseshoe in the public domain. You don't send those kinds of emails to have a side discussion offline via email. So I guess I'm asking.
Can we get back to the agenda?
Would like.
Point of order, point of order, please, Mr. Chair.
Bring it to the. Discuss it.
Thank you. Can we get back to the agenda? I don't mind if councillors want to send each other emails to remind them that they might have forgot something at a meeting. That's not furthering the decision of the business of the township. It's just reminding councillors, we forgot to talk about an item.
This doesn't take about forgetting. Forgetting is one item. The other item is.
That email, if I remember, say, and then everything was going fine and then I forgot. Is that not in the email?
You finish it with your recommendation about what action council should take.
We're moving on to four point two.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, you're you're moving on to four point two. Just a question with respect to direction, Mr. Chair. Certainly, the OPP impact is not only just for the municipalities in Simcoe County, but across the province. I heard on Friday from a number of my colleagues as did Ms. Higgins, and it's unfortunate that meeting got canceled. But I heard concerns from many municipalities, perhaps the mayor and the deputy have heard that from their colleagues in in Simcoe County. Mr. Chairman, I'm looking, is there any direction that council would like to provide to staff to try and facilitate some conversation? The opportunity that was going to provide better clarity for today didn't happen. Is there a desire for the mayor, the deputy, the CIO, the treasurer to have a conversation to get a little better clarity and then subsequent meeting, we could report back?
I I think that should just be go to the next committee, the whole, because we've already started seeing letters circled from other municipalities and that should be discussed. But once again, I think it's not going to affect our budget either way. Okay. So do we want a motion to pass the entire budget? Is there any outstanding items that we have to think?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would be excited if, Mr. Chairman, you were able to do that. Understanding that Ms. Higgins and staff will be back before you on the sixth. So if you pass, that's that's awesome, the the twenty five. But in, you know, passing a budget bylaw and a resolution, I'm assuming that something may inspire between now and.
All right. So there's nothing to. So there's nothing to, oh, Counselor Bell.
With regard to passing the budget, I just want to point out that uh, I did just a very high level Google search. And uh, to see how many municipalities of our size, slightly smaller, slightly greater, do public engagement with their budgets. And what you find at a very cursory search without even digging deep is uh. Right off the hop, seven, seven municipalities similar in size to ours do quite a series of uh, community engagements before they would ever consider passing an annual budget. Um, and that process typically starts quite a few months in advance. It allows for first uh, initial community engagement. Presentations by all of your various departments, uh, a draft of a budget. The draft is then seen by the public. Uh, and, and there, and most of these municipalities are out doing these things even at fall fairs. They're having coffee with council opportunities. There's. Numerous opportunities they present for the public to engage in the budget because once again, this is not our money, it's their money. Um, so I am not even remotely comfortable with a budget that I've had approximately two weeks to look at. Um, we're racing it through hair on fire. Then we bring in a secondary day today to do a water and sewer budget, which we're also, I assume, going to want to race through hair on fire. Um, this is, this is not the way a budget process is supposed to be done. Um, little bit late, obviously, at this point in the year to do anything about it on this particular budget. But certainly what we could do. Is put this budget out there for public engagement over at minimum, the next two weeks. Uh, and give the opportunity for feedback before we pass it. And, and then secondarily, at a future committee of the whole. We can put together a proper procedure for passing budgets because ultimately, we should be walking away from this budget and finances already starting next year's budget. And that's based on your, your long-term priorities, which I, I mean, we should all know that. So. Um, I, I would, I, I will object to passing this budget today. Um, and I, and, and pending community engagement. So. So that's where I sit on this budget. I'm, I'm not comfortable with passing it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, uh, actually, we don't pass it today. We just forwarded the budget, uh, and I believe it goes to committee of the whole and then council. Is that not how it usually uh? Uh, goes in the past. Certainly not rushed through hair on fire, object to those terms. Uh. We spent two full days on this budget. As do many municipalities. Many things that are included in this budget are items that we forwarded here after receiving deputations from the public on. So uh, it, things like doctor recruitment, we are well aware of the program. It's not something that we all of a sudden are in a big panic to make a decision on. This document is built with the policies the council passes throughout the year. And a lot of the items on the roads are taken from our ten-year capital forecast, which we passed, I think, annually. A month before the budget and those are the numbers that end up in the budget. So the budget doesn't all of a sudden land in front of us today. It's a working document that takes about six months to build based on both council policies and our ten-year capital forecast. And we spend two days going through it, quite frankly, line by line. And then we're, we forward it to the next meeting now. So it'll be advertised what the tax rate increase is. For the next meeting and we can certainly entertain deputations if the public wants to do it at that time. So, thank you.
All right. Item four point two. Mano, can you uh, give us a little brief rundown on the proposed water and wastewater budget? Oh, sorry.
We need to pass a motion to uh, advance this draft budget.
Okay, can someone put that motion on the floor? Uh, by Mayor Clark, uh, second by Counselor Goff, all in favor. Passed. Mano, back to you. Sure. Okay, we, let's come back. Can we come back at ten thirty? Just keep going? All right, ten thirty.
Are we waiting for the C A O to be here or just starting?
Go ahead.
Okay. So um. Uh, this year, the water and wastewater budget was removed from the township's budget because we need to look at uh. The rates uh, structure as well as future uh, needs for the water and the wastewater. Designated rate payers budget. And since it doesn't have any impact on the tax rate. Um, I thought we could have a separate meeting. Otherwise, it would have been. Very difficult to have this type of discussion during the, the township's budget. So that's why this year it's a separate meeting. Um, I'm not planning, un- unless it's council's direction, but I'm not planning on separating it. From the township's budget for future years. And I'm hoping that we can set rates. For um, a longer period so that we don't have to do the rate review uh, again next year. Um, typically, we do rate reviews every five years and we hire consultants. In the past, Hemsun was um. Selected to do the rate review and we would approve those rates for, at a. Approximately five years. And um, during budget discussion for twenty, the twenty twenty three budget. Council uh, gave the direction to do a staff-led uh, rate study. Which was started at the end of twenty twenty three and completed in February twenty twenty four. Rates were set. Um, with the proposed increase, but only starting July first. So it's really hard at this point to see the impact of the rate increase. Because it hasn't been long enough. In fact, the July first uh, increase was just built a couple of weeks ago. So when I started working on the budget, I didn't even have those numbers, but they came in. While I was doing the work. So I was able to update the current um. Revenues for twenty twenty four and project on the last quarter, which will be billed. Um, early January for the last quarter of twenty twenty four. So that's why we are having a, a different meeting today. So if we start, um. So I just want to mention that. In the past, we used to have one budget. It was like watering wastewater was together in one budget. In order to be able to set the rates, because it's different rates for water and for wastewater. I thought I needed to separate those budget and have one water budget and one wastewater budget with their own revenues and expenditures. But of course, there's some, some revenues and as well as some expenditure that are. Not directly for water or directly for wastewater, but the both of them. So these um, will need to work on a chart of account. To create new accounts to have those costs and those revenues split into two sections. So this is uh, work that I need to do uh, in order to get the budget in our financial system, but it doesn't. Uh, at this point, it doesn't affect the process. It's just, once it's approved and I need to go and enter it, I, I will have a little bit of work. As well as with um. Uh, we might need to have some restake, um, some amount restated on the financial statement because of that change. So I just want to give you a heads up that this might happen. Next slide, please. So when we did the rate review last year, um, the proposed increase was eight percent annually on water and five percent annually. On wastewater. So these were increased. Um, and those rates were approved from July first, twenty twenty four to December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So that's why we're having this. That's not the only reason, but that's. One of the reasons why we're having this discussion uh, this year because we don't have approved rate for twenty twenty five right now. So I went back and re-did some of the work that was done last year. However, it became very difficult to pull all that information and make scenarios. So um. We'll have a presentation from Waterworth, which is a um. A financial uh, model that I can use to enter all the information and see the impact. On not only the current year, but future years. So we'll have a presentation. Later and you'll have the chance to interact and, and make your own scenarios and see what it does on the overall structure. So next slide, please. So the water and the wastewater rates are uh. There's two different types of rates. So there's a fixed rate. So usually fixed rates are a stable revenues that we can count on. So the goal is to try to. Have our operation expenditures, like so our day-to-day type of expenditures. Funded mostly by fixed charge so that we know it's coming and um, it's easily um. We can plan ahead using those rates. And then there's the, the variable rate, which is based on consumption. So there's the two portion of. Uh, the rate structure. So if the fixed. So if the fixed rate finance mostly the operational expenditures, the variable rate can be used to finance the capital expenses. Next rate, next slide, please. So this is a benchmarking with other municipalities and similar to what I presented when we were talking about the tax rate. So Ramara is the pink column and everybody on the left is higher than us where everybody on the right is lower than us. And the difference is in yellow on top of each column. So as we can see, the water and wastewater cost for a typical household is we know it's higher in Ramara than most of our comparators. And this is based on the 2024 rates. Next slide, please.
Oh, councillor Bell.
Do you want us doing questions slide by slide or?
Yeah, we do it the same way as we always done it. So if you have a question, go ahead and ask it.
Okay, so I did the calculation.
Only until we get to the end though.
I looked at the the numbers as well last night. So and I went to Severn's website and I double checked my math again this morning and Severn is under us, not over. So I just want to, and I'm not, I know you know how to do math, but not. So I just, I'm not sure where you got the calculation from, because the way Severn works, they do 68 cubic meters is their flat rate. And then then they do a consumption based price on anything above the 68. So when I did the math, I did 140 less 68, that left me with a 72 to to develop what the rest of that rate looks like. And so that actually comes in underneath Ramara Township. So I'm just not sure how those numbers, where they came from. The only one that's actually substantially higher is Whitewater Region, which I thank God I don't live there. This is bad enough, but the Severn number is below and then the the Bancroft number. Again, I'm not, I don't understand where you got the numbers from because they have a combined flat rate of 1740. And then they also have, which is and then they have like a meter rate. So I guess they have people in their outline areas that are only consumption based. And then there, everybody within Bancroft that's in like the city proper, if you will, they just have a flat rate. And that's actually lower than Ramara Township as well. So I'm just a bit confused by the numbers.
So that's why I added the note on the bottom, because we can't call everybody and calculate the rates. We quite frankly, we don't have the time to do that. So we went on a website and it's very difficult to put that, pull that information because they all have different structure. Some, as you mentioned, don't have variable rate, it's just a flat rate. Other have tier consumption rates. So we did our best to come up with some benchmarking just to give an idea, but there's a lot of assumptions that have been taken into consideration. So we are not saying this is the absolutely truth, it's just to give you an indication.
So councillor Bell, do you, would you like them to redo the numbers or have a look at them again? Is that what you're looking for or are you prepared to move on?
Well, I'm prepared to move on. I just want to make sure that people understand that the, you know, this because I know people, the questions I had were, why don't you show us the number versus the 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 delta difference, whether as up or down? You know, because we said at 22, based on this billing cycle, 2243 before we make any changes today. So then when you look at it, it just, you know, people were just asking me why, what this slide was meant to tell us. And if it was meant to tell us that there are communities that pay more than us, then the question was, well, they may not be. So other than that whitewater region, that's all.
Okay, well, I think that's a big point. I think if we're providing information and it's not accurate, then that should be. So I think what we should do is double check these numbers. And then we know, I don't want to be, you know, dealing with this piece of paper and everything. Well, ignore that. That's not right. So let's find out the right numbers if we can. And is everybody sort of in favor with that?
So Mr. Chairman, from a direction perspective, my interpretation of how to generate a comparator would be to figure out what the average consumption is, if that is available from those municipalities, and then figure out the tiered, the tiered allocation of user fees. I'm not certain all of that will be able to be done by November the 6th, but staff can attempt to have that for you then. There's, there's a significant amount of analysis in in work.
Well, I I thought we're all looking at the three there. We're looking at Whitewater, Bancroft and Severn.
That's doable, Mr.
They're the ones that are higher than what we are. So if they are higher, then I'd like to be able to give confidence to people that the information is right. If they're lower, we're adjusting. Deputy Mayor.
I'm just not sure. I understand what you're saying. I'm just not sure if it really weighs on what we need to do for our water systems and resources. So that's, I think we have decisions to make to maintain and to do what we have to do from a budget standpoint. We could get it corrected without slowing the budget process down.
We can do it after, yeah. I, my point is the same as yours. Everybody's got different types of systems and so it doesn't, you could find out that they are lower. In which case, we're not going to change anything anyways, because we got our own systems to run. But if councillor Bell would like those numbers redone for those three townships, then I think the C A O has agreed to have a closer look at it.
And I'm not necessarily saying it needs to be redone for this, because as deputy mayor said, it's not going to make any difference. We already know where we sit and we're facing a massive increase, no matter how you look at it. So this benchmarking, I think it's an important piece to help people understand where Ramara stacks up against our, you know, similar municipalities. But I, I don't think it's necessary for that to be changed between now and November 6th. It's not possible anyway. But just on a go forward basis. And, you know, maybe it's a bigger project where you work with other municipalities so that you know, there would be collaboration and partnership and idea sharing that way, where everybody would be able to have a reasonable way to do a comparative with each other. So, you know, that's a bigger question, but I don't think it's necessary to do this pre- previous to November 6th. It's more just a remark on the fact that these numbers are not necessarily gospel, because there's a lot of work behind those calculations.
Councillor Gough.
And also, not to say that you maybe what you use councillor Bell as your calculations could be off, but we don't know, right?
Well, I just looked at Severn's website.
All right. Are there any other questions up to where we are now before we continue back to Mano's presentation? Mano, go please, go ahead.
Okay, so we try to do a presentation similar to what we see in the township, but since there's very little, like it's not as big as the entire township, it's very difficult to come up with slides. But this one is the breakdown of expenses. So as you can see, contracted services is eighty-four percent out of the total expense. We're talking about operational expense. So this would mostly be our service provider Aqua that is here with us to answer questions if council have question for them. And then we have wages and benefits, which is about four percent. Insurance and utilities come up to a total of 10. And then very little, one percent for other and debt and interest. Next slide, please. So on the wastewater side, again, it's very similar. The contracted services takes most of it. But the big difference is that debt and interest is a lot higher than in water. In water, there's only one debt that we are repaying, no change this year. However, in the wastewater side, in order to try and minimize the increase, we used a lot more debt. So it's, it creates a long term increase on the operating side in order to finance bigger expenses that are coming up, which is primarily due to the hauling from Bayshore to Lagoon City wastewater treatment plant. These expenses were not part of the previous review. So that's mainly why there's a big change on the wastewater side.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you. I have two, one comment and one question. So here it's saying 1.5 million hauling expense, but it's actually higher because the 1.5 also then has prime plus 0.5%. So that just confused people. So I had a call asking me, is it 1.5 or higher? And it is higher because we were doing that as a loan with the one point, the prime 1.5. So that number is not quite right. And I understand the expense was 1.5, but then there's the interest. So that just confused people. So I just want to point out that yes, the 1.5 has the interest on it. And then I guess the question is contracted services, is that, sorry, if you said it, I didn't hear. Is that Aqua all the way on both water and wastewater or are there other contracted services that are part of that?
There are other contracted services as well, but I believe the main portion of it is Aqua.
Thank you. And then would you know what those other contracted services might be?
I don't know, Josh can.
They'd be if we bring in a third party for like building maintenance, repair, stuff like that. So it's, it's a smaller overall cost, or if we were to take some projects and administer them in-house rather than have it Aqua administer, it'd be those. But for the most part, it's just the small building maintenance, small repair kind of stuff. So.
Thank you.
Continue on, Mano.
Okay, next slide. Okay, perfect. So this is just a comparison of the capital cost with 2023, 2024 and what's included in the 2025 budget. Some of the highlights is Lagoon City Sewerage Pumping Station 1. The refurbishment of the pumping station for $300,000. And for the water, there's a pump refurbishment program at 625,000. So we are grouping all the pump replacement as a, as one project. Because even if we identify the one that we're planning on replacing, sometimes during the year, another one fails, so we might change the plan. So by doing a big, all system pump refurbishment program, it allows us to be able to have a plan in place. But if something happens during the year, we can modify it and still remain under on the budget. So next slide, please. Some of the highlights on the capital cost are for water and wastewater, there's that expansion project for Lake Shore, Maple Ridge and Lone Birch, the servicing expansion. So those are the costs that could happen. It's not the entire project. It's just that we're talking about 2025. So that would be the cost that are included in the 2025 budget. And these costs are not, they're not affecting the rates. Because when it's an expansion project, the people that are connecting are funding this project, not the current people that are using the system. Next slide, please. So this is very small, but it is. So these are the projects for water that have been proposed by Aqua. So Aqua provides us with a capital plan and it's very precise and detailed for the first few years. But as we go further down the years, it's, it's grouped into six to 10 years. So we don't have a lot of details, but at least it's in there to show us what we should do and when. And these are all by Aqua's recommendations. Then we use that similar to what we do with every budget in the township. We have all the recommendation from the directors. In this case, it's, it's from Aqua. And then we put everything together and try to make it work. And so the next slide is what we've done to try and we reviewed some projects and then we moved some projects to try to have a more stable spending year over year and not have a year where it's 7 million in one year where it's 200,000. So we're just trying to move stuff around to make it more predictable and have a more stable budget. When there's a big project such as the construction of a new plant, then I mean, we'll have years where it's like there's a big spike in spending. So. What slide on? Slide 12 is this, this slide is us trying to use Aqua's recommendation and make it work. So the difference between the two slides are explained on the next one.
Sorry, Mano, councillor Bell has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I do, because some of the items were, and I know some of them do get summed up on that last slide. So I'm not going to ask about those ones, but the first question I had is on the 300K for the Lagoon City Sewerage Pumping Station. So just for clarity on that, because I know this year, infrastructure had done some work at at the Marina area, and I'm not sure what this 300K is versus what that project was. So just if you can speak to it to help people understand, please.
So this year we did work on pump station four. So they're, they're different pump stations. But there is, because of the age of the assets in Lagoon City, it is our oldest asset within the township is the water and sewer down within Lagoon City and Lagoon City. So there is refurbishments required over the next few years for the pumping stations within the system down there. And basically, it's replacing, replacing upgrading pumps. The systems to put the pumps down in the in the maintenance halls, there's some upgrades there required due to regulation changes with the ministry. So it's just upgrade replacements required within those pumping stations.
Thank you. That was the first one. The next one, so I know on the fire hydrants, we removed the painting. I can see that when we get to the next slide, so I'll just go past that. But then the next thing I see is the $50,000 for the iron sequestration. And I would just need a reminder on that, because I thought that council's determination was that we weren't going to spend $50,000 on discoloration. So I'm a bit confused how this one's in the budget. So I just was hoping that we can find the motion that says we were supporting that, because I, I thought that we were not supporting that. We had determined there was no health risk and this was just discoloration. So the decision was that people could take care of their own discoloration problem at home, at the, at the, at the site. So I just was looking for clarification on that one. Then on this.
Well, do you want, do you want clarification on that?
Well, they're going to need a minute to go find the motion, right? So I may as well ask the next question while they look for it.
Okay.
So the next question, and then this one would be for infrastructure.
Yeah, so the sequesterization because of the motion there, it was supposed to have been removed. I know when we were going through all, all the line items, it was one of the items that was removed. So if it's up there, it's in an error.
Okay, perfect. And then, so the next one was the study to address issues with raw water quality and recommend action. So just can you speak to what that looks like? What, what is the issue with the raw water quality?
Is it Lagoon City or Bayshore? Because I know we kind of looked at both.
It's Lagoon City and it has two amounts, 25,000 in 25 and then 75,000 in 26.
So the initial part would be some preliminary studies to investigate possible solutions to deal with it. So it's related to the high turbidity events that we're seeing at the Lagoon City Water Plant. And then the, the amount in the years or coming years after that would be to do an engineering portion of that for design and things like that. And then eventually construction would have to follow that.
So just so, so this, did we, have we talked about this enough time? Like, I don't think I remember this coming to council to understand that there's a raw water quality issue that we need to, to look at. So I'm just not sure, like, is it, is this an ongoing issue or is this a new expenditure? And sorry, a new issue that's been recognized in the past year?
It was part of the annual reports in previous years. It was highlighted in that.
Mr. Mayor. On that topic, I was just going to say, yeah, remember we had to send out the water warning, we had to shut down the intake system. Was it last spring? There are two, it might have been two year ago, it's where we actually had to shut down the intake.
It was two years ago, yeah. We, we didn't have to shut it down, but it was very close. And there was warnings sent out to the fire department about not having firefighting capabilities and things like that as well.
Yeah.
I thought it was the same one, but I just wanted to make sure so for clarity. Thank you. And then we've already skipped past, I think Mano's already up to page 13. So on. And then um we've already skipped past, I think Minnow's already up to page thirteen, so on. On page twelve, I was also confused by the Lagoon City Brecon Water Tower. Um, because we already did the relining, so then we have. Uh, interior dry side galvanized and steel deck decking recoding at three hundred thousand, so I'm just.
Yeah, and so so when we did the work on the tower, there was recommendations from the contractor that did the work for future works to upgrade the tower. Um. Some of it was looking at the membrane, some of the galvanization. They were recommendations brought forward by the contractor as well as the engineer at that time um for future works that could be done to the tower.
And is that like, so that whole three hundred thousand has to be spent in twenty-five or is it something that you can phase pieces of it in?
So the project in the previous year was for the interior part of the water tank. This portion was part of the report done back, I believe it was twenty nineteen. So it just broke out into a few years so that it wasn't such a substantial amount. So this part is actually the base of the tower on the outside of the water tank. So you're inside the tower, like looking up at the bottom of the water tank. There's a steel deck that supports the structure that's experiencing the same corrosion as the inside of the water tank. So this is just another phase of that.
And it and it and so it's a full three hundred thousand and it's and it has to be done, like, is it, is it critical that 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 happens in twenty-five? Or is it, I mean, it doesn't matter, it's kicking it down the road if we don't do it in twenty-five. But I guess just just so that people understand, like, where the severity of it is.
Uh, so this project's been recommended, I, it was pushed back as many years as the initial water tower project. Uh, I believe it was in the three to five year range when it was initially done in twenty nineteen, so it's been pushed back from there already as well.
Okay, it it's just good to speak to it so people understand what what these numbers represent.
So a lot of these projects we're going through are all recommendations by Aqua. They're not necessarily in the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, because we've had to move things around and try to stabilize it and be financially responsible with it, but still keep that standard of care as well, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, just, I wanna back up just a bit. You said there should be fifty thousand that's removed from this budget, because it's in there, no?
So these are all the recommendations right now from Aqua. It's not what, it isn't what has gone into the budget for twenty twenty-five. They come further on.
And then the last one is there's generators that show up over uh in different areas over throughout these few pages. Um. And then one generator is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but all the other generators throughout the rest of the document for whatever station it's at are a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm just curious why one generator is two fifty and the rest are a hundred.
Uh, simply due to size, some of the smaller water plants have generators that are basically uh residential size, maybe slightly bigger, and then some are huge diesel generators.
Yeah, thank you.
Back to Minnow.
Just wanna point out that it looked very similar, but there's actually two documents and it's very important to understand the difference. So um page eleven, twelve. Are recommendation from Aqua and they're not necessarily in the twenty twenty-five budget. Yeah, the budget starts at page thirteen, so fourteen and fifteen. And then on page sixteen, I um, because there's a lot of information, I did my best to have a summary of the changes. Uh, between uh the recommendation from Aqua and and it's what the township has included in um this review. Um, I'm not, I didn't um, I didn't put any comments where we just moved the project. Only when there's an impact on on the cost itself. So um otherwise, it would have been a document uh even bigger and even smaller to look at. So overall, uh these are the difference between Aqua and Township. So that slide is a summary of um those variances. Um, I would um. I, I mean, there's not that much of a change. Uh, the most of the change were just like trying to put the project on different years to try to balance everything. Um, those big amounts that are showing right in the middle of the slides. Um, it's just removing specific items and and creating an all-system program. In order to make it more efficient when we have to um replace those pumps or those hydrants. Um, yeah, that's about it for this slide.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you. Sorry, there's just one last line item. Um, and it appears on all the different pages and it's called major maintenance items. And so I look, for example, at Davy Drive, let's just pick. And then it shows major maintenance items uh every year moving forward. And then the amounts vary fifteen, ten, twelve, eight, thirteen and so on. And that was similar through all of the different facilities. So I don't think people necessarily will understand what does that mean? So what what items would fall into major maintenance that aren't captured as their own line item?
So those are generally smaller ticket items that are at each facility. So there's data computers that are on a replacement cycle, flow meters, analyzers and things like that. Um, it would just add eight or ten line items to each one for, you know, four and five thousand dollar items, so it becomes pretty cumbersome. And like Minnow mentioned, a lot of them, and it would came up in the asset management plan too, a lot of the infrastructure is put in around. The Walkerton event shortly following that, so a lot of it's kind of all at the replacement time. But it doesn't necessarily all immediately fail at that life cycle, so it's kind of spread out and it allows us the ability to. Replace costs under a capital plan instead of being an emergency if we wait till, say, June or July and we've seen something fail. Then we can use that capital for it instead of an unexpected cost.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I'm not, I'm not questioning anyone's judgment. I'm asking the questions because the people at home don't necessarily understand what all these different categories and components mean. So um sometimes I'm just asking so that we're transparent for the public. So I appreciate, I appreciate the answers to to all of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's it for a water, the capital projects in water. The next slide is very similar, but for wastewater, so it's not as big. So it's gonna be um easier to see probably, I'm hoping. Um, so uh first to. Improvement proposed, so slide uh seventeen and eight. Okay, slide seventeen are all the projects um uh following Aqua's recommendations. And then we did uh the same type of review and try to see if there's any projects that could be canceled or um delayed a few years. So eighteen and nineteen are the numbers that are being used to work on the rate review. And then the last page, the page twenty, is um the explanation of the variance between Aqua's recommendations. And the township's um data that are used in the rate review. So you'll see um the major change is um the wastewater treatment plan for Bay Shore. Uh, we added uh four million five hundred based on uh the total cost of the project. Uh, which was not included in Aqua's recommendation, but beside that, there's very little change um here and there. Um. Yeah. Any question on that?
See, oh, councillor Bell.
Yeah, just on um slide seventeen, we have berm work around the small lagoon for four hundred thousand. And then I thought that I saw that some of that was taken out, but now I'm not seeing where I saw that. So are are we doing berm work?
No, it was recommended by Aqua uh to continue use, but with the proposed use change at the site, uh we removed it.
Yeah, I thought so, and then I couldn't find it removed. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll keep going. Uh, so the water budget highlights, um so one thing I did this year and um. I just wanna explain uh what has been done. So we get an allocation from OCIF yearly. Um, before um a couple of years ago, um, we were not involved in the calculation for OCIF. So uh the province was using information from uh the FIR, the financial information return that we have to produce as a municipality. Which is very similar to like our income tax statement that we do as um uh. Everybody has to do one, but as a town, as a town, we have to produce the FIR. And that's a very uh extensive database uh that is used for multiple purpose. And one of them was for uh the government to calculate our OCIF allocation. OCIF is Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. And it's a grant we receive yearly and we don't need to apply for it and it's not for a specific project. So um it was uh the calculation has changed and we need to provide uh the cost of some specific type of infrastructure. And uh and they use that to calculate our allocation. And since thirty-nine percent of the cost of the replacement uh value for uh this. Specific infrastructure we need to report on was for water. I thought it was fair to use thirty-nine percent of our annual allocation towards water project. I did the same thing for wastewater as well. So the total allocation, if you can go back, please. Total allocation from OCIF is for uh twenty twenty-five is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That's a rounded number. It's not the specific, the um, the the specific amount. So thirty-nine percent of that has been included for the twenty twenty-five budget. And then an estimation of what that could be for future years is also part of this review. So next slide, please.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you. Um, I just, the thirty-nine percent, so forty-four percent of Romero's population are water users. So I'm just curious, the, like, why did you choose thirty-nine versus forty-four? Like, what?
Point of order on that, uh Mister Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
We've already established, long since established, it's not forty-four percent of the actual.
It is forty-four percent.
It is seventeen percent. It is seventeen percent, and we established that that was an error as well. Uh, when you take the total properties in Romero Township, it works out to about seventeen percent, I think, on sewer. Twenty-one percent or twenty percent when you you do water, because we have more water users than sewer. So that number's already been clarified numerous times at this table.
It has not been clarified. That's not the correct number. It's forty percent. And all you have to do is go to Aqua's report and.
Right now, and I I think I can answer Minnow's question. I don't think either of the answers were provided were correct. I think, Minnow, what you're trying to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but because thirty-nine percent of the work is related to the actual. Uh, water, that's the percentage you use, thirty-nine percent of the grant. Isn't that the case? It's more of a capital cost than it is a percentage of the population?
Absolutely. That that's the capital cost. So thirty-nine percent of the the cost that I have to report are directly related to water assets.
Thank you. All right, continue on Minnow.
Next slide, please. Okay, so this, can you make it a little bigger, please? This is an overview of the wa- the twenty twenty-five uh water budget. And this has been compiled using the eight percent increase that was discussed last year. But is not currently approved for twenty twenty-five. So I just wanna point out that the bottom line, um, there's a deficit of four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar. If we um go ahead and use the eight percent that has been used to do this part of the budget. So on the top portion, the grant is um the OCIF that we just discussed. Um, in the um other, um.
So Minnow, the the shortfall of four thirty-one then, so you need to increase it another approximately fifteen percent to on top of the eight for this balance the budget, right?
So we'll go to different scenarios later in the presentation. And council will also have the chance to ask us live to do some some increase, decrease or some changes. So and that's why we have two people from Waterworth here with us today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Minnow, if we had done the long term, you wanted us to do eight percent for eight years to balance a budget at that point. What would it have looked like if we would have approved it? Because it should have, it would have been the same shortfall if we had approved eight years increase, right?
Sorry?
Last year, you wanted us to approve eight percent per year for eight years to balance the budget. So we did do the eight percent last year, but we're still showing that shortfall this year. It would have been the same even if we had approved eight years. Is that correct?
Uh, so I I don't know if you recall, but uh when I did a presentation last year, the eight percent was not taking us out of the deficit. It was a plan on multiple years to try uh to come out of there. So today we'll present scenarios, but these are only scenarios. I can come up with twenty-five scenarios, but I don't know what the intent of council is. So um I came up with different scenarios for water as well as wastewater, but I don't know what the ultimate goal is for council. As a treasurer, I would prefer to increase the rate to balance the budget on the first year. But I realize the increase is quite significant and it might not be possible. So we need to make a decision. And as long as we are aware that if we don't increase the rates for the water and the wastewater budgets to be fully funded. Um, the taxation reserve is backing up for um the deficit that we carry year over year.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Oh, yes, okay, that's fine. Then come back to me. So the in the other, the bulk of it is um the capital expansion that is under uh first line under expenses. So that's the expansion project. And as mentioned before, uh the expansion is not funded by the the rates. It's funded by the new people that are coming on to the new system, not the new system, but the expansion. So that's most of it. Um, other smaller revenues are uh when we have. Um, a sale of a property, for example, there's a fee added to the account, so that that's where it comes from. And then we have revenues from penalties and interest, so people paying their bills um uh later than uh the due date. Uh, we have revenues from solar panel, but we also have the expenses from solar panel. It's just happened to be on that, on those buildings, so it's part of those budget. And then the main revenue is the water charge, so that's what's on um the utility bill um on quarterly basis. So if we go on the um expense expenses, capital expansion is the Lake Shore expansion. Sorry, I'm just shortening it up. There's more um more roads involved, but we'll just call it Lake Shore to try and keep going. And then the capital improvement, uh you, those projects was were listing listed on previous slides. Contracted services uh is the main part of it, um as we saw on the pie chart. Uh, insurance, it's pretty stable. Materials, that's just like little things we need to um. It's just five thousand dollars, uh little things we need here and there to do the work we need to do. In other, uh there's a little amount there, not sure exactly what it is, but it's very small. Principal debt and interest, um that's a yearly cost, uh there's no actual, because we do that at year end. Repairs and maintenance, again, that's just um to take care of our buildings. Salaries and benefits, this is the, one of the shared expense that I was referring to. So um this is um when staff do work for water, that's where it is. Uh, training and mileage, nothing there and utilities.
Sorry, just backing up to the salaries and benefits.
Mm-hmm.
We're already at eighty-eight thousand, we got three months left to go. And our budget was only sixty-one thousand. So the ninety-two thousand is fifty percent more than twenty-four. Is that because the request for us to do the services for them is increasing? Or have we changed the method of when we have our own staff participate?
Um, the budget is fifty-three thousand six sixty-four and we're at forty-one thousand five hundred. Are you on the wastewater one?
I'm on the wastewater, but.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. But it's the same idea, so there's um, there's a combination of different type of um employees in there. So we have a full-time employee that is spending her time between water and wastewater. And then we have the. And then we have the crew from the infrastructure department. When they are called in to go, uh, their time is allocated there.
Okay.
Counselor Bell.
Thank you. So my questions for infrastructure are, well, I mean, really it's across departments, but specifically right now, infrastructure. Um, whenever you do come in and do some work for, uh, consumers of wastewater or drinking water services, how are you, uh, determining how much time you're charging? Because my understanding is we don't have any project management software, so I don't know how to know how, how, how much time is, is being allocated.
So currently, all of my time is with infrastructure. I don't bill any of my time. I probably shouldn't say this, but I don't bill any of my time to water or sewer. Um, so those wages and salaries are basically, it'd be some of our building maintenance within those buildings, uh, a resources technician who is full-time water and sewer. Uh, we just split those wages. When we get into the, the wastewater side, there's the staff time to cut the grass at the fields that's administered by the township. So it's from an infrastructure standpoint, the time cutting grass is all billed properly within our, our, um, A D P, our payment, our, our, our payroll, uh, system. So that is all recorded that way, uh, with the resource technician. It's just essentially split fifty fifty between the two. So.
Thank you. Um, any more question on that summary? So we'll go to the wastewater. So again, the O C I F. Um, so the wastewater, uh, infrastructure, um, the wastewater assets that are part of the report that I need to submit to O C I F represents forty five percent of the total assets. So forty five percent of the O C I F yearly allocation has been included in this presentation. Um, other revenues, um, is again the, uh, expansion program, uh, expand, the servicing expansion. And, um, that, that is, uh, the main, uh, amount in that will show on the next slide, other, under other revenue. And then we have in twenty twenty five, as well as in twenty twenty four, we already discussed it, uh, at a previous meeting. But in twenty twenty five, uh, I will be financing the, uh, hauling with a loan. Again, because I don't think we can afford to pay for it in one year. Uh, so that creates an increase in debt repayment, a hundred and ninety four thousand and three hundred dollars for the, from the twenty twenty four budget. So when we get to that slide on, uh, next to, uh, debt and principal repayment, there's a big increase there that's caused by, um, the debt that will be taken, uh, for the hauling. And, um, this hauling, uh, portion is under, um, is under emergency control, which is part of contracted services. So we'll see that on the next slide. So on the hauling part, um, we have included one point five million, um, for, uh, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Depending how, uh, fast the development goes, um, we might not need to haul as much in twenty twenty six. That's my understanding, but for the purpose of this budget, it has been budgeted at a full one point five million. So under grants, um, there's a combination of the O C I F allocation as well as, um, I don't know if you recall, but when we talked about the twenty twenty four budget, we had approved an amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, from federal, no, not federal grants, C C B F community. Yeah. Okay, yeah, C C B F for now, please. Um, Canada Community Building Fund, thank you. Um, so, and it was not used, so I'm carrying it over this year. Uh, the balance that hasn't been used. So it's not a new location, it's just a carry forward from last year. Uh, we have interest income, um, and on the other, uh, again, if we look at the capital expansion, the first line of it on their expenses, uh, we can see it's a very close amount. Um, and then same as water, we have the penalties and interest coming in. The sewer charge line, this is, um, the utility bill that, um, sewer users are getting quarterly. And then again, the solar panels. So capital expansion, we touched on that. Capital improvement, we had a whole slide and explained all the capital projects. Uh, contracted services, again, it's, um, a big portion of this budget. And the debt repayment, uh, I came up with a new line just to identify the increase due to the hauling. Um, and, uh, so I'm anticipating, uh, in twenty twenty five only the payment of the twenty twenty four debt. I know it's, it gets confusing, but depending when the debt is issued, uh, we don't start the repayment right away. So the hauling usually happen later in the year. So that's why in twenty twenty five, the only payment we're seeing is the, the one caused by the debt incurred that we will incur at the end of twenty twenty four, when we're done with the, the hauling. Um, the insurance is a split of the overall township insurance. Material, little amounts, uh, same as other principal debt and interest. This is the debt that is currently in, in the wastewater budget. So it doesn't change, it's the same until everything is repaid. Um, and then what else? Salaries and benefits, um, we touch on that on the water side and it's the same idea. We have, uh, one staff that is split between water and wastewater. And then we have the crew from the infrastructure department. And then utilities is the same as, um, every budget. So currently with the five percent increase that was discussed last year, that has been used to calculate this budget. If we, uh, go ahead and, and approve a five percent increase, the shortfall is three hundred and fifty two thousand and three hundred. So that, if we don't fund this, uh, it's supported by, uh, the taxation reserve at this point. Next slide, please. So, uh, we worked on different scenarios and I produced some, we produced some slide to show you what the scenarios are. But I would like to, um, pause and introduce, um, J P and area from Waterworth. Um,
Um, sorry, Mano, I, I, I've had the request to take, uh, a ten minute break.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll come back and get into the three scenarios, okay?
Okay.
All right. So we're come back here at twenty four minutes to, uh, no, sorry. Um, we'll come back at twenty two.
Yeah.
Give you twelve minutes.
If the clerk can just confirm that we have quorum in attendance.
Your worship, yes, I can confirm we have quorum.
So I'm waiting for Jen to confirm attendance.
Yes, I can confirm we have quorum, your worship.
Thank you. All right. Now Manol is going to take us through, I think, three different scenarios. So go ahead, Manol.
So I would like to introduce counsel to Waterworth that I have been working with in the last few months. And we have JP and Aria from Waterworth. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Thank you. Hi, I'm JP Jali, founder and CEO of Waterworth, and I'm here with Ari, who is with our client support team. Counselor Snatch, thank you for inviting us here today. Waterworth is a software platform that empowers local governments towards achieving financial sustainability while balancing affordability and intergenerational equity, and this is tough. And this is done through a practice of what's called continuous revenue management, which is two things. Thing one is keeping a live financial forecast model up to date at all times, which you'll see today. And thing two is keeping you, our elected officials, informed on a continuous basis about the financial reality so you can make smart decisions quickly and efficiently. My role here today is not as a consultant to advise you on what to do. My role is to help you understand what the math is telling us and to facilitate exploration of scenarios. And if you wish to engage with the math, which I encourage, then I will facilitate that and you may draw your own conclusions from it. What you'll see today is math in motion and what you'll get out of it is results, not reports. And I do want to emphasize that while I'm the one presenting, Mr. Kavanaugh, Ms. Higgins, and Ms. Maloney have put a lot of thinking into this and this is very much their work that you'll see. Counselor Snatch, I'll pause just a moment in case there's any initial questions about my introduction.
Any questions from counsel? Please continue.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here. So we're going to look at the water utility first, and you see a couple of scenarios here on the screen, and I'm going to drill into one of them. And explain first what you're seeing because there's a lot going on here on the screen. So there are three things in this model. There's expenses, revenues, and a cash position. So we have operating expenses, and you can see we're going back to 2023, 2024, which is not quite over yet. So there's some assumption about where things will land, and then there's the budget for 2025, and then some assumed inflation carrying on into the future. On top of that, there's a little tiny bit of debt servicing, which you can barely see. It's a very thin trace. It's about $16,000 or so. There's capital improvements, and then there's capital expansion, which was talked about a little bit before. So these four layers make up what I would call your revenue requirements. Now let's look at the revenues. So you have variable rates. You have revenues coming in from fixed rates, and they're stacked one on top of the other. There's a little bit of something called other operating revenue. There are some developer contributions, and there's some little bit of non-operating revenue. I think we can barely see it. And then there's some grants that also we're talking about earlier. And interestingly, as was mentioned, I'll just turn on the capital expansion projects, and you'll see that in the model, the developer contributions are lining up with those costs. So they're essentially a net zero cost to existing ratepayers. So if we now look at the cash position by itself, and I just kind of... So we see here that at the beginning of 2024, the cash position of the water utility was essentially at about zero, a little bit negative. And with the scenario that we're showing and the rate increases that you'll see in a moment, it will take pretty much until about 2033, and even here you'll see that we're not quite above zero. But you can see that the deficit is being reversed. And when this cash position is rising, starting around 2028, it means that at that point you're bringing in more revenue than you're spending, and so the cash is growing. The fact that this is dipping all the way south to almost $2 million means that to implement this scenario, you'll still need to find $2 million somewhere, whether it's through taxation or some other form of borrowing, to carry you through this period. And this scenario is being held together with these rate increases. So these are the 8% starting in 2025, and the 8% are going on all the way through to 2033 on both the fixed side and the variable side. Okay, that's the first scenario. And maybe I'll just pause a moment before I go to the second one, which in the second scenario are just showing you that some other combination of increases. In fact, let me just go there so you can see that, and then we can stop for some questions. So in this scenario, we're increasing the fixed rate, 8% in 2025, followed by three years of 10s, and then some 9s, and some 8, and 7, and 6. And then instead, on the variable side, those increases are lower. So it just shows you that some, and there's probably countless combinations of numbers in this table that will achieve the same thing. And I think this is back to what Manol has said earlier, which is, I think, counsel could provide some direction on what kinds of combinations of numbers they would like to see in here. But the two facts remain, which is revenues have to increase in order for you to reverse this cash position. And you will need to find something like around $2 million to carry you through this period.
I believe GP was pausing in case there's any question from counsel.
I don't see any questions, so please continue.
Okay, so I'll move over to the wastewater side now. This one's a little more challenging, but let's go into, first of all, where things are at right now. And again, we'll start with three things. So we've got operating expenses, and we've got, these are the contracted services, the hauling. So I've got them labeled slightly different. They're being phased out by end of 2026. There is some current debt servicing. And then in this model, there's some proposed borrowing to help, in part, cover the hauling, I believe, and also to help cover some of the capital expenses. And this new amount of borrowing will generate another layer of debt servicing. So if we just look at the debt servicing by itself, this is what you're currently, your current obligations for debt, and your debt servicing will grow to this amount if this borrowing goes ahead. And so, and then here as well, we've got the capital improvements, and then we have capital expansion, which is shown in a separate layer here. And just as in Water, the developer contributions are covering the capital expansion. So if I turn on all the layers, again, we will see that the revenue requirements look something like this. So to pay for this, we have variable rates, the fixed rates, again, the developer contributions, a little bit of non-operating revenue, some grants, and some borrowed funds. Okay, for 2024, 25, 26, and 27. So if we look at the operating expenses and the current debt servicing and the proposed debt servicing, and we compare that to our rates, we can see that while the rates now are just barely covering those two, and this doesn't even include the fact that we also have the contracted services in there. The rates are just barely covering it, but the moment you start taking on debt, this is where more revenues are needed to cover that debt in addition to ongoing capital improvements. So if I turn it all on together, and you can see the cash position here is not even actually changing direction with the way that this scenario is being presented. So over the course of these next something like eight, nine, 10 years, you will end up something like five, five and a half million dollars below zero, which implies that you would have to borrow even more or find money from somewhere else to help cover this. And this scenario is being held together with only 5% increases in all these years on both the variable and the fixed side. So clearly, this scenario, the math here doesn't work, and it's pointing to the need for increased revenues to at least change the direction of the cash position. So let's look at a different scenario. Let's look at this one. And in this case, we are, we're beginning to change the direction of the cash position. We still do drop to about 2.7 million, and this would require, and again, this is just an example. So in this case, 8% increases on the fixed side, and then something like 12 and a half, 11, 10, 9, something like that on the variable side is one combination of numbers that makes this scenario work the way it does. And then the third scenario is what's called zero deficit in 2033. So in this case, we are, again, needing to find something like 1.3 million just to carry us through this period. But by the time we reach 2032, we're above and now beginning to build reserves and in good shape. And this is being done with these numbers here. So we're looking at, I guess we're doing nothing in 2025. That doesn't have to be that way. But 2026, we have 15 and a half, 10s, 8s. And then on the variable side, we have 22%, some 15s, and you can see here 12 and a half and 10 and so on. So again, I'm just going to pause in case there's either some questions or, again, I encourage if you want to try some different combination of numbers, I'm happy to plug them in and see how things shift around.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor has a comment.
Just when you show the scenarios, you did it on the water as well, where you're showing future years of 10, 12, 9. Don't you usually on a 10-year try and average that out, and you would just set one rate, or no? You want to see the variable?
Uh, so if I could just understand your question, so are you wondering why it's not the same number every year?
Correct. When you mentioned right at the very end, when you're wrapping up, you said future years might have a 10%, a 9%, a 12%. Why wouldn't you even that out?
I mean, again, it depends on the, you know, what's going on with the costs, but we can certainly try that out. Let me just quickly, let's go back to, well, on the water side, we do have this scenario where it was 8% every year. Right? So I think this is what you're saying. Why don't we just do the same number, whatever, some 10 years in a row. So let's go back to the wastewater side. And I'm just going to go and create a new scenario here. And let's just call this... I'll just call this scenario four. And let's just start all over here. So I'm just going to get rid of these. Oops. This. Okay, and let's start in 2025, and I'll start with 10s. Okay, so you can see, there you go. There's a scenario that gets you almost there by 2033. In fact, I'll make it 10 and a half. And that gets us over the line. Okay, and what it does do is requires something like you're going as low as 1.9 million. So, Mr. Mayor, this is definitely a scenario that works.
Well, you usually try and do that when you're planning it over the years. I remember when O-Star first was announced years ago and all the upgrades, and that's what we tried to do. Unfortunately, at that time, the regulations kept changing every single year. So we'd set a 5%, and then the next year corrected to a 6%, and then the next. So that's a risk you run if you get more inflation when you try and lock a number in, when you can't predict what inflation numbers are going to do. But at least you're trying to plan for an even curve to get you there and not spikes and lulls in your charges.
Deputy Mayor.
It's easy to talk with percentages of increases annually, but can we just take an average cost for a resident today and what that would look like once these increases have gone through by that year? Just use, even if you use $2,000 as an annual cost, just to go to the easy.
So I don't have the rate card programmed in here, but what we can do is let me just quickly, bear with me a moment here. And so you're asking about, let's say, the, you want to look at the water side first?
Sure.
Okay. So let's pretend it's a one-inch meter. Okay, so right now, you're paying, as of July 1st of this year, you're paying $258. Okay, so I'm just going to bring up my calculator here. So you're paying $258 plus, let's just make something up on the consumption charge. Would 15 cubic meters a month be an appropriate amount? That's about 4,000 gallons. Let's do that. So 385 times 15. Okay, and I'll just do, so I'll just use this calculator here. So the 258, the 258 is quarterly, so I'll divide that by three. And then I will add 385 times 15. Hang on here. 385 times 15. So you're paying $57 a month in this example. And I'll just do this one separately. So 50, so let's call it 58. 258 divided by 3. Okay, so plus, plus 58. So that's the monthly charge that you're paying right now, a one-inch meter consuming 4,000 gallons, which is about 15 cubic meters.
Do you want... Why are you dividing by 3, not 4? I missed something there.
Well, if it's a quarterly charge, it's three months' worth of a charge. There's four of them in the year.
Oh, okay, fine. Yep, gotcha.
Okay, do you want to see the amount, the annual amount, or is monthly okay?
No, no, no. I was just thinking you were dealing with an annual and dividing it to get your quarter. You're doing quarterly into, that's fine. I got it.
Is that not, you just used the consumption numbers. You didn't use the base, right?
I took the 385 down here, and I multiplied that by 15 to give us $58 a month for just the consumption side. Sorry.
That's consumption as well. That's consumption as well, because you divided, that's per month, though.
Yeah.
On consumption, but you're not including the quarterly base.
Yes, I did. So let me do it again. So 385 times 15 gives you a monthly, let's call it $58. If if you consume 15 cubic meters in a month, you're paying $58 for that month. Meanwhile, you're paying $258 for the quarter. I'm going to divide that by by three. So you're paying $86 a month effectively on the fixed side and on top of that 58 on the variable side. So you're paying effectively 144 a month, which is the same as, let's say, 1,728 a year.
Okay, so can we just take that 1,728 per year then and look at what it's going to look like at the end of this eight year projection, whatever it was that we had in that?
Yep.
Chart.
Yep, exactly. So what I'll do is I'll take, I'll take 10, 10 and a half percent. Let's do, let's just go. Let's go 1.105. And I'll take that to the power of, let's say, eight years worth. Okay, and multiply that by the 144. So let me just, let me try that again. Let's just go 144 times 1.105. So after year one, you're paying 159 a month. Okay, after year two, you're paying 175. 194. That's three years. Four years. Five. Six. Seven, one more to go. So after eight years, you're paying 320 a month from 144.
Thank you. So we're looking at more than a double in cost over that period of eight years.
Yeah, and if we look at the if we look at, go back to the model, you can kind of see that visually. So let's just go like this. Yeah, you can see the difference between between, let me see if I'm able to take my annotator out here. So you can see the difference between this guy and this guy over here. Right? You're bringing in 1.5 million. In 2023, you're bringing in, you know, 4 million by 2033. Actually, we should be looking at where you are today. So so this is where you're at today compared with this.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, there's no more questions here, so continue on.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to present at this point. Those were the two water scenarios and the three wastewater scenarios, and we did a fourth one. I'm happy to stay online if there's if you want to explore anything more. I know I don't, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like me to to present?
No, thank you, GP. What I could say, however, is we have an Excel spreadsheet that if we play around with scenarios, we can know what the impact is on the end user because that program was not designed for that. It's mostly on like on the town side, like what the impact is with the expenditures and revenue and where the cash, when GP talks about cash flow, it means the state of our reserve. So what I wanted to point out today is we need to make a decision on that cash flow where we want it to be. And that will drive the scenarios that we can do to provide funding. And then I could come back with what it means on on the rate payers as an increase.
Are there any more questions for Manon or JP? All right. Well, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Counselor Goff.
I have a question, and this is more, I believe, towards Manon. Have you did any sort of scenario where the number of users increases per year? Like, how many that could help us? If we had an idea, okay, we need 400 more connections a year for the next to help this.
No, I didn't work on that.
I don't know if it's possible.
How many more users we would need to not increase the rates? Is there? Yeah. I did not include any growth in population. This is just based on our current users. I know in the past, when we hired consultants to do the rate studies, they were including growth. However, it did not materialize. So I don't think at this point, unless we foresee major development in less than two, three years, it it would be a good idea to include it. But if we approve rates for less than three years, then I don't see what it could change.
Okay, now I was just curious because I know in the past we we have had emson include a certain amount for growth. And that growth has never come.
Yes.
We're still waiting for.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so what is it exactly you'd like council to do now? Do you do you want us to receive this? Do you want us to make recommendations? Or you want to start talking about the percentages that you feel we need to increase this by? I understand the scenario, but we've already got the eight and the five in place right now. And that was to be reviewed at budget. We're we're here now.
Yes.
Just to confirm that we're leaving the rates, the five and the 8% increase in 2025. Or right now, you're looking for an additional increase?
Well, I I believe we should go with an additional increase because based on the scenarios, you've seen where we will be in 2023 if we keep this rate increase.
So do I put you on the spot if I say what type of, what type of percentage increase? I I see the three scenarios. Which one are you favoring?
Well, the zero deficit in 2023 is my favorite for sure, but 2033, yes, yes, okay. But if we go that way, we have to be mindful that there's still a shortfall. So I just want everybody to be clear on that. That we're not fully funded by the water and wastewater. This means we rely on the taxation reserve, which will be paid back and it's part of the scenarios. When when the cash flow goes up, it means we're repaying the reserve. So if council is okay with that scenario, that would be the zero deficit one in 2033. That would be the scenario that that to me would be the best one. But I believe on the wastewater side, it would be a big hit on 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 the rate payers for sure. On the water side, it, the increases are similar to what we discussed last year because there's no major changes, but on the wastewater side, this would mean significant increases.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, here's the problem. I like, I think we have to because we were talking at our last meeting, we're applying for grant money, but if we get any anticipated growth, then there's going to be an expansion required at the Lagoon City plant, which then will have to be funded through a deficit and paid off as well. So we we've got to be you know, careful here. We we've got to get down to zero because I'm sure that expansion will be required by that time. And if we're already in a deficit situation and need another large expansion, then then we're going to get farther in trouble. So we need to balance to get to zero. And with any, and I hate to use the word luck, we'll actually start getting some of this development over that period of time, which will help offset some of these costs and and maybe not go as far in debt. But then you're going to want that surplus. And if you get that development, you're going to want that surplus money for the next expansion.
Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Goff.
So Manon, you're looking for for the water scenario, scenario number two to move forward with that?
Yes. So scenario number two in water is very similar to scenario number one, but we were focused on trying to fund the operational expenditure with the fixed cost and the capital expenditure with the variable rate. So that's the main difference between scenario one and two, and the end result is very close.
Counselor Bell.
Thank you. I have quite a lot of things to say, actually, but my first question is, do we need to to keep these folks here? I I thought we don't, they they don't need to be part of our discussion, do they? Because it's just their time and I don't want to take their time.
Well, it depends if council wished to see different scenarios, then they could show you live what it does. Otherwise, if council is not looking into them, then yes, we could let them go.
Sorry, I thought you said we you would do it just with a spreadsheet with impacts or whatever. So I I I'm not, I just don't want them to be wasting their time.
So what I can do on spreadsheets, and I can use a software as well. I've been entering data. I'm comfortable using the software. And I could possibly project it on on the same as GP was doing. However, they're the expert in in rates, so I don't know. Depends on the question.
As Chair, I'd like to keep him here just in case any questions come up. Okay, is that okay with the presenters? Can you stay for a bit? Thank you. Thank you. All right. So go ahead, Counselor Bell.
Well, I'm just going to say what I've already said, but it it needs to be said again. So wastewater consumers should not be paying for Bay Shore Village. Wastewater consumers should not be paying for this ridiculous and crushing effluent hauling that they have no control over. They were not the people who chose not to manage the systems in in a way that didn't get us there. They're not the people who spent 14 years fighting with Minister of Environment for something that couldn't be had.
Okay.
Are you going to interrupt me? Are you going to interrupt me again? Is that how you're going to chair, David? Because you don't like what I'm saying?
A point of order, the chair runs.
No, the point of order is on the chair because he's interrupting me again.
No, I'm asking you, if you're introducing the the
Absolutely.
The past that I'm going to limit to you to one minute. If you want to introduce new things.
Me, there's five minutes. There's five minutes. I can read the procedure bylaw. I can read the procedure bylaw.
Again, Mr. Chair, I was trying to clarify, the chair runs the meeting and it's your job to keep the meeting moving along efficiently. Thank you. So the chair can stop somebody from talking if they feel they're off topic or it's not contributing to moving the budget forward. Now, if you want to talk about Bay Shore, I'll give you one minute right now and then we will go back.
So as soon as we remove the Bay Shore project and the effluent hauling from the wastewater budget, we'll be able to start talking about how to solve the wastewater budget. That's number one. Number two, as soon as we look for a solution for Park Lane and Davy Drive, we can start to solve the problem of water. In 2021, we had the option to commission a consulting engineer's report to reduce the crushing costs of some 5,100 on one system and 6,500 on the other per annum projected operating costs in the year 2022. So the minute we start to solve our problems, then we can have a reasonable discussion about how do we fund municipal services. But right now, this is not a reasonable conversation. So and until we get to the point where we remove Bay Shore and we assign that back to the people who caused it, which is the entire township. Although I say that, but it would be hard for the entire township to support a 14-year argument with the Minister of Environment when the entire township wasn't aware that the argument was happening. Indeed, even the people who were paying for it.
Your your one minute is up.
Oh, well, thank you, Chair. That's that's very much appreciated.
To talk about what we're talking about is scenarios and how we.
I am talking about that. The minute we remove those expenses, we can talk about how do we fund municipal services, but until we do, we can't have a conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
I I didn't see a motion there anywhere, but to remove, like, we have one sewer system. So I don't think if we wanted to split up all our sewer and water systems, that would take public, that would take a considerable amount of time, would it not? Has anybody ever seen it done in a municipality? Because that seems to be what I'm hearing, that we're wanting to vote today in budget day on segregating all the systems.
Mr. Mayor, we already took a vote in 2024. It said we have one system and it will be off the table for another year. So that's where we're staying. We know those other systems. We know they contribute to a lot of the cost, but that's the system that we have. We have one system. So I'm not prepared to talk about that. If you want to take it and to other business or something, I want to talk about the scenario. So any counselor that wants to talk about the scenarios here about increasing rates or raise your hand, please. Are you going to talk about the scenarios?
I'm going to ask a question. I'm going to ask the mayor a question because the mayor just said that it would take time and consideration to separate the systems. So my question is, where was the time and consideration when there was a combination of Bay Shore Village to Breckenham Lagoon City? Because there was no consultation. Breckenham and Lagoon City were not informed. The carried motion that refers to what I'm told by former CAO Drinkwalter is the combining of those systems doesn't exist. It's not in the 2015 HEMSON report. There was absolutely no community engagement.
Order has been called.
I'm not understanding the direction of this conversation. This has nothing to do with balancing the budget or talking about
Yes, it does. Because if you don't choose Bay Shore Village, then you can't balance the budget because you're not, you're trying to charge somebody for something that is an undue charge.
I have no interest in answering questions today. I actually want to deal with the budget.
Yep.
You can't do the budget when you're trying to charge people an undue expenditure in the budget.
I do have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
See, all done. Do we have an option not to haul the sewage out of Bay Shore Village right now? I didn't know that was an option.
We've been ordered to haul. As a board of directors, you can choose to do a number of things. Should you choose not to do that at the the recommendation of staff? You put council and the corporation in harm's way from a personal fine individually as directors of this corporation. Mr. Mayor, we we have our operator here who I think can provide additional clarity on the exposure that individually as members of council and the corporation that you would put yourself and the corporation at risk.
I'm sorry, who asked to remove the hauling? That's not what I said. I said to remove the funding. I didn't say to remove.
The mayor's question was separate. He just wanted to know if we had a choice to not remove the the sewage. So thank you for your answer, Mr. Dunn. Counselor Goff.
Counselor Snatch, I was wondering if maybe you should let the presenters go because this is becoming quite embarrassing, the conversation that's being put on here.
Well, I think I just have to control the chair more. So what I'm going to do is that we're going to only take questions on the three scenarios that are here, which our friends may help us with. And we may not make a decision today, but let's just talk about the three different scenarios. So if there's any counselor that likes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start on the water one. If you want to deal with water first.
Sure.
So in scenario one, we are still looking at a bit of a deficit at the end of that period. I agree. But are we looking at any large upgrades required to the water stage? Like, we have a lot of capacity there yet, do we not? Like, we're not going to have to do in in 600 homes. We don't have to upgrade the water yet. There's more capacity if we do get developments?
And so we did have Tatham look at the central air servicing study. We're just finalizing those numbers now. We don't have an answer currently. As soon as we have it, we're hoping to have that presentation presented to council in the December committee meeting there.
The last I looked, though, we had more than 1,000, I thought, capability on water, but I could be wrong. You're going to get the updated numbers now?
Yes, yeah, we're just.
Because like, we know on the sewage side, it's it's actually 400 homes and then that triggers the 85%, so we can get to 600.
Correct.
And then and then a large, but you have to make the commitment to get that extra 200, that extra 15%. I I realize that. But if we're not sure on the water, like, I don't mind running a bit of a deficit and still having a deficit on the water if there's no large expansion looming at the end of that period. That's what I'm trying to figure out, but we don't have that information today.
What we're trying to determine, kind of like what Nick identified earlier, is the incoming water, the turbidity issues we've had in the past. There may be some concerns there with the capacity of the plant. And we're just trying to run those scenarios with the engineers to determine capacity that is available.
And that seems to be a growing problem as well, turbidity coming downstream, doesn't it?
Question to Manon. Manon, on the water scenarios, you say that 2025 revenue projection from water users is 1716. And in scenario two, it's 1756. What's that extra 40,000 for?
It's just a different increase?
Oh, I, okay, right. Okay.
Yeah, so when I was presenting the budget, this budget is based on scenario one. And we have a shortfall of 352,000 just for 2025. And so that's that scenario one. And then scenario two, we, I was, we were trying to fund the operational expenditure with the fixed rate. So that's why the increase is different on that scenario.
Gotcha. Uh, councillor Goff.
When I look at the differences between scenario one and scenario two, um, it's basically around twenty five dollars a year more per year, but then there's some years where it's actually less of a increases. So I'm fine with uh scenario two.
Yeah, I guess my only comment would be is that we've just recently informed everybody it was gonna be at five and eight, and we told them we review it, but I do think some to be simple and just say you have an increase of eight percent over the next period of time, and we constantly go back and review it, not in a formal review, but just saying, how how's it coming? Don't have to do all the work that you've done to do this. But I I'm fine with scenario one or two, but I probably actually prefer one because everybody understands it. Everybody understands what water rates will be.
Yeah, and when we did.
A fixed percentage. I mean, it could be eight and a half, um, but I I don't think it needs to go up and down, and I know you thought it.
Yeah, I I thought it should stay constant as well, and I thought when we did the eight percent last year, we knew we were coming in with a slight deficit at the end of the water because of the cost of the water tower.
Yes, we were. Um, when I presented last year, the bottom line, I don't know if you recall, but the bottom line showed similar to the uh cash flow uh line. So it was showing a deficit for many years, and it was starting to go up at the end, which is very similar to what we're seeing right now.
Yes, and that's kind of the commitment. When we did the eight percent, we knew we'd be in a slight deficit at the end of the eight, ten, well, ten years, I think it evens out, but at the end of eight years, we still had a bit of a deficit, I believe.
Um, I believe we were getting out with deficit in twenty thirty two.
Yeah.
Which is very similar to what we're seeing right now. If I can speak with the different increase is because we, I was hoping to not use as much taxation reserve to fund the water and the wastewater. That's why I was um proposing higher increase at the beginning, so that we wouldn't get to a point where we used up all the township's reserves. So I was trying to like use as little as possible, and also when you increase by the same amount year over year. Um, I mean, it's 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 a scenario. We can absolutely do do that, but the idea we had was to try to not use as much reserve. And as well as um if we increase by the same amount year over year, at one point, we might need to decrease it when we get out of deficit and start building that reserve, but that's far way down the line.
Yeah. Uh, sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I I'm okay with either uh either scenario. I I kind of, I I'm like councillor Snatch. I believe that people have been already expecting the eight percent. But I do, I would like to get through one more year. I think we need to have a better idea on how much uh the new Bay Shore system is gonna cost, and how many grants we're gonna apply for and successfully achieve, and how much that's gonna change what our needs are moving forward.
Mano, I have one more question for you. Um, in a scenario where, say, there was no water or wastewater users in Romero Township. The grant that you've allocated to them in here, where would we use that grant if we didn't use it in the wastewater and water? The thirty nine percent, as you were discussing earlier.
Well, I can't, I can't say for sure because I I don't work for.
But we could use it elsewhere.
But according to what I had to submit, if we didn't have those water and wastewater assets, I believe our allocation would be smaller, so we wouldn't get that amount, because it's based on the total cost replacement value of all our assets. So if we have less assets, I we can easily assume that we would less uh get a a smaller allocation.
Okay. Uh, councillor Bell.
I just wanted to point out Deputy Mayor was talking about wa- uh wastewater and mixing them with this, this conversation, and the eight percent was applied to drinking water. The amount that was applied to wastewater when we made the determination eight months ago, or whatever, was five percent on wastewater. So the two things aren't the same. So you just, I want to be clear so that people aren't confused. The water is separate from the wastewater, eight percent on water, five percent on wastewater.
Uh, one more question. Mano, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I saw here, you said we didn't use this year. You said it came from the so-called gas tax fund from last year.
That's that's wastewater, though.
Any other water questions?
I I think they're looking for a direction, or or do you want?
I think you have to do both at once, don't you? I mean, whatever, we can go for direction.
Well, they're two separate budgets, and that's why I'm trying to decide. I I'm comfortable with one or two. Uh, I would lean more towards one, the eight percent. It does leave us in a bit of a deficit. We knew that last year when we set that rate that, but again, we'll wait on this study. When when the staff finish the study, we may have to take another look at it next year. If all of a sudden we find that we don't have the capacity we thought we did. But without that information right now, I'm comfortable with the small deficit at the end of the uh, no, I mean, a water mains can break, I understand that, but on what we budgeted, I'm comfortable with the small deficit. So I'm fine with the eight percent scenario one.
Would you like to put a motion for?
Put that on the floor.
Second by Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Passed. Oh, anything opposed?
I don't like making a decision with two hours' notice, so I'm opposed to moving anything forward today. I've already made that clear, so I'm just gonna stay opposed.
Uh, that's what we were asking.
Not until we have any community engagement, and since we don't want to do that, then I'm not, I'm not moving this forward.
It's a vote. It's point of order.
And you don't need to interrupt. Point of order, point of order, you're interrupting me. You don't have the chair, and you don't have the floor.
If if we get.
We understand.
Point of order. Uh, yeah, let's not interrupt. Councillor Bell was finishing her statement. Carry on, Dave.
All in favor? Yeah, all opposed. Uh, councillor Goff and councillor Bell opposed, so that is passed. Oh, sorry. Oh, all right. So you opposed, or are you for it?
I'm opposed to the the scenario that you voted for.
All right. So now we're gonna go on to wastewater. So I will just ask the question that I started to ask. The three hundred and fifty thousand, you're saying we didn't spend it? And I I thought, I thought we had commissioned all these environmental studies, and that we would be spending that. Isn't that, isn't that what it was for?
Uh, yes, it was, but um I rely on the information that was provided by the directors. We've you, we've used a little bit of it, but it's still ongoing.
Yeah, so we're still in that E A process, so we have used some of it for the investigations and studies completed. Um, but there's still more to be completed, so it's not the full amount that's gonna be carried over. It's gonna be a balance of it, but it it works out to to be at the same. The other issue we kind of ran into is the criteria within that grant uh is specific as well. So we've used some some of the money for the spray fields and some of it from that grant, so.
Um, I, so the expenses to complete the E A then are into the twenty twenty five budget.
Correct, yeah.
And the extra, the money that is there is going to cover that.
Yes.
Okay, I have no other questions. Any other questions on wastewater? Yes, councillor Bell.
I have a couple of questions. So we're looking, we we were talking about doing construction in twenty six potentially, right? And then we're showing it bridging twenty six and twenty seven. So some of the questions I have include, so we've already talked about, we didn't include effluent hauling in twenty six. It's there for six, but it's not there for seven, correct? Okay, so, but you're bridging the construction between twenty six and twenty seven, so I guess my first question is, if you're bridging the construction for those two years, why do you think we won't haul in twenty seven?
Construction, we're hoping to start construction late twenty five and then complete twenty six, and as long as it's completed by twenty six, we shouldn't be hauling in twenty seven.
Okay, and then the second part is there was a significant or potentially significant archaeological find, and I don't think we've had an update on what that means as far as that construction. So might that be impact or may or have an impact or may it not, or do we still?
We're waiting on direction on that as well. So that's kind of why we bridged it. We were hoping to do all of the construction in twenty five, but based on what was determined within the fields, that's why we bridged it to the twenty five, twenty six.
Thank you. And then my my third question is actually for finance. Um, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was not three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the initial uh projected budget in twenty twenty four. It was a million dollars, and we reduced it to the three fifty, and I don't know where the six fifty went. And at this point, I've heard you speak about where OSIF Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund is going, but I have not heard any talk about where Canada Community Building Fund is, not that six fifty, and then not any of this year's C C B F or any future years. They're not, they don't seem to be in this projection. So I'm curious where that money is and why is it not being included?
Just a point of order. What what does this have to do with the budget here? This has, this has nothing to do with the wastewater.
It does have to do with the.
The six hundred and fifty was allocated somewhere else, and why are we?
It wasn't allocated somewhere else. It was returned to reserves. It was returned to reserves, and we're looking at a long-term scenario, and without including that.
The deputy mayor, councillor, you don't like being interrupted. Please let the, let the deputy mayor finish his, uh, no, he put up his hand, actually, and finish the statement.
All all I was wondering is if we could just move to, you know, keep on topic with what we're talking about as far as the wastewater and the money we have available to us at this time and the scenarios. I I think those scenarios don't impact our decision today.
So if I'm correct, councillor Bell, what you're asking for is a percentage of that grant over the next few years. I don't think councils made that decision. We only decide on those grants uh, like, one year at a time. So, I mean, we have not made a decision to allocate any more of the so-called gas tax to the water or wastewater.
It's not gas taxes, Canada Community.
Please don't interrupt the chair. Point of order, councillor. Please do not interrupt the chair. I told you I had a little point of order, Dave, so uh if you don't mind, let's take the meeting back.
So can we please use the correct terminologies?
Uh, point of order. Please wait until the chair has finished talking. Thank you, councillor.
Um, yeah, so we have not allocated anything in the future because we do that as it comes in. So I think that decision's already been been made by council. So are there other questions? If there's no other questions, then should we move to a scenario that we uh would like to put forth here? What page are those scenarios on?
Okay, so the wastewater.
Here we are, thirty one, yep.
Good, thirty one. Yes, please. Okay, so as presented by uh JP from Waterford, uh, we have, I, we did the work with three scenarios, and the reason we did three scenarios instead of two in in water is one is a status quo, meaning using the increase that was discussed last year, which is five percent for uh wastewater. So that would be scenario one. And then uh the original plan was to have two scenarios, one being status quo and the second one being zero deficit by twenty thirty two, uh, twenty thirty three. But when we did that, that's actually called scenario three on this slide. Um, the increase was quite significant, so we decided to go midway just to provide some information to council and hopefully uh, hopefully help make a decision. So these are the three scenarios that we have included, and um we did a slide with the impact on the end users so that it can help you uh make a decision. Um, so scenario one, uh, we have an increase from twenty twenty four of uh close to sixty four dollars, and that increase is uh carried over every year because it's a yearly increase. And so year over year, you can see on on page uh thirty two, if you wanna change slide, Ashley. So this would be the impact on the end user um with the five percent increase. However, if we choose that option, we will be in a deficit of um, over eight million by twenty thirty three. And then scenario two. Scenario two is um midway between the current situation and the zero deficit, so we will be at a deficit of uh close to four million by twenty twenty three. And um on on page, on this slide here, you see what the increase is for um the ratepayers for wastewater only. We're only talking wastewater right now. So that's what, that's what it is. And then the third scenario is to be similar to water and be close to zero deficit in twenty thirty three, and hopefully start to build uh some reserve. And these would be um the increase on uh the ratepayers.
And where is that percentage here?
Oh, the percentage are, uh, there's a uh page thirty six. There's the uh percentage increase for scenario. So if council wished to have another scenario with uh the same increase year over year, different from the five percent that is scenario one, then we can absolutely do that. But if we look at scenario three, for example, you'll see there's a a a bigger increase for the first few years, and then the increase slows down because we don't, I was trying to stay away from using a lot of reserves, so that's why the bigger increases at the beginning, and then we slowly um we we keep increasing, but not as um aggressively.
Uh, councillor Goff.
Um, Manon, in your scenarios here, you haven't taken into account that there's a, if there's any sort of grant money that becomes available for the expansion of Bay Shore, then these numbers would would lower.
Right, yeah, no, there's no, yes. So for Bay Shore right now, it's fully funded by an additional debt. That's how it's funded in this scenario.
Uh, deputy mayor, please.
What is the value we put in the budget for that? Was it eight point five? Or seven point three?
Seven point three.
Seven point three, okay, thank you.
Over two years.
I'm just looking for a number here. Hold on. Okay, so, I mean, I don't know. Um, if we went with scenario two and eliminated the increase in two thousand and twenty five of fourteen point six, which I'd have a real hard time doing, then we're basically at eight percent. Um, I I think it's better, once again, to be consistent, whether that number's eight or or something else is. Um, Mister Mayor.
I I guess, and part of the reason you have for the higher in the first year is to cover the cost of the hauling. Like, this is a a sudden increase in the budget that nobody anticipated, so here we are. So you're trying to cover that and then do an eight percent from that point on, and that stops us from going as far in debt and trying to dig our way out. I I get it, you're you're trying to guess when interest rates are gonna be down the road. I.
Uh, can we have the other councillors' comments? So see if we can get us in one direction. Dana, do you have a comments, questions?
No, I mean, I would have been okay with both of the zero deficit uh for water and wastewater, uh, just to get us out of this perpetual struggle. But um I I understand the need for consistency, so um I mean, whether we go eight or nine or whatever, but consistently across the board to sort of average that out of scenario two.
Deputy Mayor.
I think we should probably go with zero or scenario three, but just for one year. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say for an eight-year commitment, but I think that would get us to the point of understanding if we have grants coming in for the Bay Shore piece, and that would allow us to adjust at that point instead of committing to too long a term.
Councillor Goff.
Um, this has been a thing that's been council's been trying to deal with for a number of years, and it never seems, seems that the goalposts keep on moving further, further ahead. Um, and I hate to say it, because I do have water and sewer sewer users in my ward, and I also, it's we might have to bite the bullet the first couple of years, like the deputy mayor said, just to see where we are regarding grants and go with scenario number three. And I know it's, it seems unfair because that rate is fluctuating, and it's not really known to residents, but I'm sure they want a system that's going to be sustainable.
Uh, Mister Mayor, do you have any questions?
Uh Mister Mayor, do you have any questions?
I was leaning towards scenario two, actually.
Am I not here? Am I not in the room?
I skipped over the mayor on the way because he was, so I went to councillor Goff first and then I came right around this way. Uh, sorry, Mister Mayor, I forgot what you were saying.
Uh, I was leaning towards scenario two, but I'm still listening to the dialogue to see where we end up.
Councillor Bell.
Well, absolutely, nobody around the table is a consumer of the services. So probably again, I'm going to say, why wouldn't we ask the people?
Sorry, that's incorrect information.
None of these people around the table consume wastewater services, not one of you. That's the truth.
Okay. I was thinking of water.
Then the people we should probably ask are the people who pay the bills, right? Because why are we sitting here deciding for them?
Uh, sorry, Mister Mayor.
Because that's what actually we're elected to, we're elected to do that, that's why we're here. And we're actually held personally legally responsible if, if something were to happen to these systems, not just the corporation. We can be held personally accountable. So that's why we're here and that's why we have.
Which has nothing to do with the funding model. Either way, it's going to get funded. The question is, how do the people who have to pay the bills want to be able to fund it? And you don't want to ask them that because nobody in this council seems to understand that it's the consumers and it's the taxpayers who pay the bills around here.
I think we all understand that. What is the proposal you'd like to make at the present time? Would you want to defer this? Is that what you're trying to do?
I want to ask the people who have to pay the bills.
So to do that, you wanted to defer this then?
Yes, I do. Again.
You want to put a motion on the floor to defer the wastewater?
I want to put a motion on the floor to engage with the public who has to pay the bills to find out what scenario works for them. So no, I'm not trying to defer paying the bills. I understand very well that the bills need to be paid. What I want to do is ask the people who have to pay it, what they think they can afford to pay. Because some of them right now are already probably calling their real estate agent. They knew based on the February numbers that they were looking at about thirty-six hundred dollars at the end of eight years. And that's caused some of them to put their houses on the market as we speak. Looking at something like fourteen percent, that could have them all on the phone right now. So what I want to do is put a motion on the floor that says we're going to engage with the public to find out how they think they can pay the bills.
Go ahead, put your motion on the floor.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second or?
Publics that pay the bills.
Do we have a second or? We have no second or. All right, so the, the current wastewater is, is that the five or the eight percent? Five, so this would take it up to eight. Well, that's what the proposal is. Oh, sorry. I, I turned pages while I was.
Yeah, scenario two gets is eight, but it's fourteen point six five this year, followed by eight for the remainder of the term. And I'm, and that leaves us with a four million dollar deficit at the end, which I am concerned about because I know there's expansions that are going to have to happen to the Lagoon City plant. And you know, if you're already starting at a deficit in thirty-three and faced with another expansion on top of that, however, it, it also allows us to try and get funding in the meantime, because it, it may be we can't do the expansion and we can't have development until such time as the debts are paid off. So you, you gotta try and fund one that's as affordable as can be and then not expose the township to too much debt. So I can live with scenario two. And, and again, we, at least for this year, we put in the fourteen percent and then we, we're gonna have to have another look at it. We're gonna have to see what the total costs come in, what kind of grant money we're able to get, if any. And, and then relook at the numbers. This is going to be something we can't lock in for ten years because there's just too many variables. But I think we, we don't want to start knowing that this already projects a four million dollar deficit. So I'm comfortable with that while we finish the project, sum up all the bills, see where we're at and, and see if we have to adjust it again next year.
Councillor, scenario two is what I would put on the board.
Mister Mayor, isn't that just moving the goalposts further back all the time? Right, like at least we do the, the third scenario for the first two years, it's a little bit more. But it might give us a better indication as to where those goalposts are so that we're not four million dollars in, in deficit.
Uh Deputy Mayor.
I was kind of looking at it the same way councillor Goff, but I'm wondering if this is maybe the best way to get through the next year, at least to see what the ma- majority of grants or potential grants we could get and, and a little more affordable, just trying to keep that happy medium in the middle. And then we may have to adjust again to scenario three after that, but at least it gives us a.
I don't think there is a happy medium.
I know there's not a high here, right?
I guess if it was, I would probably go with scenario two, but I would probably make it eight percent right across the board. That's an increase of three percent and it gives everybody lots of notice that I, I don't like jumping to fourteen point six five percent. That's almost double the eight percent, so.
To the folks on screen, if we wanted to even that number, what does it come out with? You got the computer program scenario two with a consistent.
So this, this is scenario three where we did the ten and a half all across. I think you're wanting to do something around scenario two where you, you end up with the projection.
Right, so it'd be the ten and a half and that was scenario three adjusted.
I don't see that there, where is it though?
It's not, if we, if we evened it out.
Sorry, this was, this was scenario four that we did but, but half an hour ago, which is a consistent amount across the board. Um, but this gets us to zero deficit.
Ten and a half.
Yeah, and in fact, I think for twenty twenty-five, even though I've got ten and a half here, I think projection is hardcoded. Uh, let me just go and fix that so that we can see, uh, because we've got some hardcoded figures for, uh, for both of these. So I will just, uh, I will just let the math run automatically by, by moving these and.
Sorry JP, I just, I just need to clarify something. The reason there's no increase in, in the, in the, the rate section of the financial module for twenty twenty-five is because we can't use whatever was in there in twenty twenty-five and increase it by whatever percentage. Because we had a rate increase mid-year, so we can't use the system for what it's designed. So we had to do like extra calculation in Excel. But if we're just looking at an idea, then we can use it. But I will have to go back and do the math on, in Excel because of that. So I'm really hoping in order to like minimize the, all the extra manual work to have rate increase set for a full year so that I can use tools that are designed to do it instead of creating extra, extra spreadsheets in Excel.
Okay, so let me resummarize somewhat what Manoj just said, which is that the, uh, the numbers for twenty twenty-five are projected um, in a, in a hardcoded way. So they're not, so the, the percent increase that gets you there, uh, that's something Manoj, you, you will, you will work out. But beyond that point, uh, we're looking at, uh, ten and a half on both the fixed and the variable in this scenario four, and that gets you to zero deficit by twenty thirty-three. Uh, but again, I don't think anybody is suggesting locking in rates for ten years. But this is, this is the scenario we did earlier. I'm happy to do a different one.
Uh Deputy Mayor.
I'm just going to make the motion that we accept scenario two and move forward.
At the fourteen point six five?
Correct.
And then down to eight percent after that?
Just a comment, I, I'm pretty sure we know it's not going to be the eight percent. That's the concern I have because I don't think anybody in this council wants to see us at a four point four million dollar or four million dollar deficit by twenty thirty-three. So we already know we're not gonna, like we're just trying to set this year's, that's.
But, but yeah.
And, and, and that gets us over the high, but I don't think we should even say that we're going with scenario two at eight, eight, eight because we know it's not going to be, we're waiting for the numbers to come in.
So what are you suggesting? You're suggesting go with a standard fifteen percent or a ten percent? I, I think we need to, to, to identify it.
Well, the ten point five, is that what I'm hearing? If it was locked in at ten point five, that would get us to zero at the end of twenty thirty-three, or is that incorrect? Because you made a comment on that earlier.
Uh, we're still, because of the rate situation in, in mid-year twenty twenty-four, I think Carly's just trying, if you enter ten point five across the board, where are we at? I'm sorry.
Ten point five for water, sorry, for wastewater zero million. Um, I didn't do ten point five, I did eleven point five, which got us close to a zero deficit by twenty thirty-three. However, I didn't change the hardcoded numbers as Mano mentioned. So I'll do that quickly and I can get back to it with the rate would be, uh, for eleven point five, which seemed closer to a zero million, like a zero deficit in twenty thirty-three, one second.
Yeah, I think that scenario two, at least that we should just lock it in at the point where it gets us to that zero then for next year.
Like find a constant rate to achieve a zero dollar deficit. Okay, like we're looking, okay, not the four million dollar, the zero. Okay, let me look at that quickly.
Mister Mayor.
Just a comment, yeah, because I was leaning towards scenario two till my good friend beside me pointed out, yeah, if we just keep pushing it down the road, we just keep getting, I mean, we want to be at that zero by twenty thirty-three. So we've got to pick a realistic number. And again, it's going to have to be adjusted again next year when the project's over and done with. But if we start too low, you're back in the same boat. We know what the bills are for the next year and a half, the hauling and the, and the construction. The trouble is the hauling is actually not on capital side, it's operating.
Absolutely, yes, it's not, it's not a capital project, we can't amortize it, so it is an operational expense.
So you said you were for scenario two and now you're more or less leaning towards waiting for this percentage, like, but constant percentage over the thirty-three years?
If we can, but keep an eye that our operating is highest right now because of the hauling. Operating will drop down a million dollars here once we, we get the new system or more. So you want to run up, how much far do you want to carry that debt? That's, that's the question. I'm still got an open mind here, looking for suggestions that we can go with.
Well, your operating is going to drop down basically over three million dollars based on hauling next year and year after.
It's looking close to fifteen point five percent after looking at the spike in the twenty twenty-five rates being edited with it. Um, I'll just enter it in Waterworth and make sure that that confirms that it's closer to fifteen point five.
Okay, so then I amend my motion to, to fifteen, whatever the fifteen or fifteen point five to get us to zero after eight to start with and implement that for next year, but not a long time commitment.
Uh, well, I guess it's on the, I, I don't know what I want to do here. Um, I guess it's on the floor, so we just have to see all, we have to count all.
You want to take a break, let everybody ponder a lot of information.
Good idea.
A lot of information, we just put, you know what, maybe break for lunch, back after luncheon, we'll.
Okay, we'll, we'll be back here at ten to two.
Jen, do you want to start with the tenants or make sure we have a quorum?
I can confirm we have quorum.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back to the wastewater scenario and we have to come up with something that we can vote on here. So I don't know if someone has a motion. I've already indicated that I like scenario two and maybe without the exception of the big bump in the first year. But maybe other counselors can express their opinions and we'll try to find some consensus.
I think I put a motion on the floor with a second or did I?
Oh, you did? Sorry.
I think I had.
You're right. I think I remember that.
I just wanted to speak what to what we left off with with the 15.5% increase. That was incorrect. 13% set rate between now and 2033 would get us to a surplus in 2033 of 770,000 at January 1st. 2033 is a big purchase year capitalized, so we would have an end of year deficit of 400,000. So that would be approaching our zero deficit by 2033. So it's kind of within their mid-year. So that would be a 13% increase on both fixed and variable rates.
Now, when we're saying 13% here, that's we've already approved the 8%, so we're only going up. Sorry, we've approved the 5%, so we're going up 8%.
The rates have not been approved for 2025. They were approved for 2024 only.
Right, and then we're going to review them. So.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, so from 2024 to 2025, we would have a 13% increase and the same year-over-year increase.
So Clark, did you put the, do you have a record of the motion that Keith put on the floor? It was what?
I think I amended that to be the calculation to balance after eight years. And then we were going to get that figure when we came back. We thought it was 15, but it's only 13.
Scenario number two, with the percentage being amended to 13%.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we were actually just moving away from the scenarios. Just go with the 13. A hybrid between two and three, which is going to be 13%. Instead of having a variable rate, we're trying to lock it in consistent across the eight years.
And Counselor T, you have any comments on it?
No, I think that's a great idea to get us to zero deficit as well as keeping things consistent.
Counselor Goff?
Excuse me, I'm fine with that scenario.
Counselor Bell?
I have two things. Just want to remind everybody that 13% per annum, that's compounding, right? So just keep that in mind when you're doing your calculations. And secondly, again, I'm not going to support anything without doing engagement. So I'm just going to oppose and it doesn't matter what scenario.
There is, sorry, there is an automatic public meeting in order for us to approve the rates.
Yeah, I understand that, but we didn't do any engagement whatsoever on any aspect of the budget. So I'm not supporting any aspect of the budget because we did not do community engagement on our budget.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion that Mr. Bell Deputy Mayor has put through? That has passed. That brings us back to, I think, the end of the agenda and back to, back to the mayor. So thank you for participating, JP, and thank you.
Oh, there's unfinished or new business, Dave.
Oh, is there? Sorry, I don't have my agenda. Is there any new or unfinished business? Is this new or unfinished business or a question to what we had in the past?
It's about the budget because we didn't.
Okay, go ahead.
So at Thursday's meeting, Deputy Mayor Keith Bell requested where was the budget from the Historical Society? So, and that was a discussion that it was going to come back. So what the reason I'm saying this is just because I received phone calls from folks over the weekend who are extremely concerned that that was an indication that we intend to pull that funding. So I know that we left it in the budget and, but I also just want to remark that indeed, and we all received the email, they, they had in fact submitted the day after.
Very detailed.
Yeah, they'd submitted it. I'm telling this to the public. So for transparency, the, the Historical Society indeed did submit their budget. So there was just a mistake, miscommunication, no big deal. But I just want to say that because I know that they're really afraid that we, our intent is to take it out of the budget. So I just want to make sure they know that we have the email and that the intent is not to remove it from the budget.
Okay. Any other unfinished or new business? Okay, back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And do we, do we have an in camera? Because I.
Mr. Mayor, we have a special meeting of council. But right now we have a window of about 35 minutes to be able to deal with legal counsel. Oh, should, should you conclude before 2 o'clock? We can go and commence the, the special meeting of council.
I believe so. We would adjourn and then come back for the special meeting of council. Is that okay? So I would look for a motion that we adjourn at, that clock's at 1:36.